Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the Coventry Town Council. It will now come to order at 5:30 PM. Roll call, Ms. Ludwig. Thank you. Mrs. Lima?
Here.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mrs. Dixon? Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, Ms. Ludwig. Would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may proceed then. I was going to have the approval of the minutes, but I don't think that Joanne is on right now. So we'll have to go exactly into... Please access the executive session, please.
We have to vote?
What?
Oh, I didn't... I didn't know we had to vote to go into executive. Sorry.
A man have a motion to adjourn into executive session.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you. Do I have a second? To go into executive session?
I'll second.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Ludwig? Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. We've got three. Jamie's not here, but we've got three. That's enough. Okay. We're going to move into executive session for the following. Perwood Island General Law, 42465A1, discussions of job performance, character, physical or mental health of a person or persons specifically for the council to discuss the following board positions or openings. Coventry Housing Authority, two openings. Coventry Zoning Board of Review, an alternate one opening. Second item, close pursuant to Wood Island General Law, 42465A1, on discussion pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation specifically for discussion regarding appeal of tax fees for Mr. Donald Nestor. As a note, Mr. Nestor was offered a closed or public session for this item. He asked for a closed session. Vote will take place in public. Item number three, close pursuant to Wood Island General Law, 42465A2, session pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation specifically for discussion of the following matter. Central Coventry Fire District and Coventry Housing Authority Consent Order versus others and others, KC 20190944. And fourth item, close pursuant to Wood Island General Law, 42465A1, session pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation specifically for discussion of gate housing pipes for Tyo Lake. Have a motion in a second. Members of the council, please access the Zoom link for the executive session. Can you guys hear me? Okay, thank you. Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn from the executive session?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Lima. May I have a second? Thank you. Madam Clerk, please take... Let me see. Okay, motion to adjourn. All in favor, please raise your hand. Foyers, no nays. Thank you. May I have a motion to seal the minutes of the executive session?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Lima. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Who said that? Second?
John LeBlanc.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, foyers, no nays. Members of the public, first of all, thank you so much for your patience. The council had a great deal of work to accomplish this evening. We started at 5:30, and we do appreciate your patience in waiting an extra 30 minutes for the public session to start. First of all, I'd like to report that close pursuant to Wood Island General Law, 42465A1, discussion of job performance, character, physical or mental health of a person or persons specifically for the council to discuss the following board opens. Coventry Housing Authority, Coventry Zoning Board of Review. The council will appoint one candidate to the Council Coventry Housing Authority later in this evening. Number two, close pursuant to Wood Island General Law, 42465A1, on discussion pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation specifically for discussion regarding appeal of tax fees for Mr. Donald Nestor. As a note to the public, Mr. Nestor was offered a closed or public session for this item. He asked for a closed session. The vote will take place in public. That will occur later this evening. For item number three, close pursuant to Wood Island General Law, 42465A2, session pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation specifically for discussion of the following matter. Central Coventry Fire District and Coventry Housing Authority Consent Order and others, Kent County, 20190944. No vote. This item was not heard in executive session and will take place later in the public session. May I have a motion to table this item to an executive session that will occur later in the evening?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Lima. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, foyers, no nays.
One second, please. I didn't see Jamie raise his hand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's frozen. All right.
I was looking down. Thank you, Mrs. Amber Toronto. Fourth item, close pursuant to Wood Island General Law, 42465A1, session pertaining to collective bargaining of litigation specifically for discussion of gate housing pipes for Tyo Lake. The council did not have any occasion or any time to discuss this item. I would like a motion to table this to a later time.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Yes.
I don't see Jamie on the screen.
His hand is up.
Oh, it is? Okay. Thank you.
Foyers, no nays. Thank you. Approval of town council minutes.
Oh, there he is.
Madam Clerk, did you receive any written corrections for the minutes for April 4, 2021?
Just one from Hillary Lima, and I will make that correction. There's also another correction that I saw myself in the minutes. Just one of the words. And I'll make that correction. It says committee bone pass, and it should say bond pass.
Good catch. Thank you. I may have a motion to approve the amended minutes for April 4, 2021.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Lima. All in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Foyers, no nays. Thank you. Next, C2, approval of town council minutes for April 26, 2021, reference pages 43 to 49. Madam Clerk, did you receive any written corrections for April 26?
No.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the town council meeting for April 26, 2021?
Make the motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Thank you, foyers, no nays. Next item on the agenda is Agenda C3. Ms. Lisa Mills, our Finance Director, will present the finance report from March 1, 2021 to March 31, 2021. And I believe in our packet, we also have the... The report for April. Is that correct, Mrs. Mills?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Would you like to give us... Please give us any overview for the package that you presented to us?
Yes. This... These reports represent 75% of the current fiscal year. Our revenues are 80%, slightly higher than last year's 79.99, and expenditures are slightly higher than last year's. And I've also highlighted the revenue received for the CARES Act, the Wind Energy, the shortfall in the housing aid of 703, 30703, 345, and also the state motor vehicle phase out of 1.1 million that we will not receive from the state. They reduced and revised our motor vehicle reimbursement due to the COVID funds. So...
Why don't we look at the March report first, and then you can give us the highlights for April, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Members of the council, any questions on the finance report for March 2021? Ms. Mills, the only... The only thing I noticed was that the police department of public safety is a little over its budget. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do we have any indication of what is causing that overage?
Pull the detail. So... Wait a minute. When you say... Are you talking in the totality of... Which line?
I was at March 31. I was on page 54 of 221 pages. The police department, the budget, percent of total budget, and percent of budget received. Okay. Those figures.
The 424 versus 375?
I think it was 75% versus 77.75%.
Yeah, I can't quite hear you. Hold on. I gotta turn up the volume. Hold on. Sorry. Hold on. So... The March 31 report is 75% of the year. They're all pretty much in target except for the fire dispatch. Is that what you're referring to, madam president?
Yeah, I'm looking at the total... The total line, police department. It says... I was just looking at that line. Correct.
Yeah, and we're at 75% of the year, and I think it's right on overall.
Okay. So it's the fire dispatch? Is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, we're at 75%. The fire dispatch is a little bit higher than last year's, but there's other departments within the police department that's lower than last year's. So... It puts us right on budget at 75%.
Okay. Any other questions anyone would like to ask about the March 2021 budget? I mean, I'm sorry, finance report. Ms. Ludwig?
Thank you, President Dixon. So Director Mills, I think this ties out with what you were originally saying, but can you just confirm for me? So there's one or two numbers that stick out to me. So under the summary, so it's page 51 of our packet, in other departments, for total property taxes, other departments, 311% of the budget. That is what we've collected, right? And is that where some of those funds you were talking about were applied?
Yes. So if we went to the detail of the other departments, that you're correct, Ms. Ludwig. It's the miscellaneous 1.5 million we received. 800,000 of that is from WED. That would be the outside the norm.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on the March report? Okay, let's move on to the April report. Ms. Mills?
Yes. This update represents 83.33% of the current fiscal year. Revenues are slightly higher than last year's at 85.83, and expenditures are slightly higher than last year's. Current year is 84.24, and last year's was 83.95. And we have the same highlights with the CARES Act and the miscellaneous... Well, the motor vehicle phase out and the housing aid. The only open item is exactly the piece that was a shortfall from FY22... Excuse me, FY20, from the housing aid for the maintenance requirements. But everything else for the highlights are the same as prior month.
Are there any questions that members of the council would like to ask about the April report?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig?
Thank you, President Dixon. Director Mills? On the... One, two, three, fourth bullet, on page 57, you mentioned the state motor vehicle phase out. And then I noticed, I believe the summary of that is on page 63, on how state aid, I guess... I don't know if I'm saying it right, but it is reduced. Basically, they're saying, okay, you're getting COVID money, so we're reducing our funds to you. Can you just... Can you explain that to us a little bit?
I'll try to explain it the best I can. So in that little... That's why I attached the page 63 of the state's paragraph on how they're going to reuse some of that federal COVID money for their own COVID-related expenses, and therefore our share of the motor vehicle phase out reimbursement has been revised and reduced by 1.1. That's... They did that to all the towns, all the municipalities.
So for example, if we just put that in context, that's the exact number that they're telling us we will not receive... We will not receive this for fiscal year 2021. So are we basically at 100% now of what we were going to receive?
Yes, ma'am. So technically, we received the COVID money at 2.3 million. However, they do start motor vehicle fees out by 1.1. So, you know, the net effect of that, we really received 1.1 net positive for the town.
Okay, so I think this is... This kind of goes along with the theme that we've talked about a couple times over the last few months of somehow putting something together that helps our residents understand how COVID money is affecting the town, because I continue receiving messages from constituents that are very, you know, surprised to hear that the town's getting 15 million and 10 million in this number and that number, because our state senators are putting out tweets and Facebook messages that tell everyone, we've got the money, we're getting the money. And then, oh, by the way, we're gonna slash money from what we told you we were gonna do for motor vehicles. So 1.1, that's a big number to reduce us by.
And that's not out there in the papers either, until you do a little digging and you realize that the state has withheld some of it. That's all the money we've received for COVID so far. I'm sure the school is a little differently, is done a little differently, but before I left on vacation on the 11th, we put the application in for the new American Recovery Act and for all those COVID funds. So that application's out there. We haven't received any of that, but it's my understanding with discussions with... In the Director of Finance meetings, that we should be receiving it within 30 days of when the state receives it. So... So that's where we are. I mean, we do need to... I have been semi-working on this summary of, you know, the COVID funds and what we received, what we... Whatever they're gonna qualify... What can qualify for the COVID funds, including reduction of revenue? And also summarize the Ursa I and Ursa II funds, just to have a big, like, little grid, big grid that kind of summarizes these definitions and where we stand from the town's perspective. But I just started that on the 11th, and I haven't got back to it yet, so.
Thank you very much. I think it's absolutely needed. Residents are asking us for this. I know I'm not the only person being asked this, you know, similar questions. So having some sort of summary tool to show how funds are being allocated would certainly be appreciated. So thank you.
And Ms. Mills, when you present that data, please indicate the date received. In other words, people... Numbers are out there, as Ms. Ludwig mentioned. Numbers are out there. People think that all this money has already come into our town, so it would be good to indicate date received for certain funds, and that way people realize that we're just not holding onto things or not doing something. We're doing something that they don't know about. We want them to understand clearly what we're getting and at what point in time. Mr. LeBlanc?
I just have one question. On page 59 of 221, it's the monthly budget to actual report revenues. Under general government, there's finance. The budget for finance was 185K, but we're up to 436,000, difference of about 251,000, let's call it. I just didn't know what was driving the additional revs.
I'm sorry, Mr. LeBlanc. What page?
59 out of 221.
About halfway down the page, Ms. Mills.
And you're asking about the finance column or which one?
I'm asking about... It's under general government. Then it has town clerk, probate judge, municipal town, and then finance.
Yes.
FY21 budget was 185K.
Yes.
And we're at 436. So it's a difference of like 251, let's call it. I just didn't know what was driving that.
Well, it's pretty consistent with this time, this point in time last year. I just... I think the finance revenue has been budgeted very conservatively, because it's based on interest and some other investments. So I just think it's been under budgeted or conservatively budgeted in the past. This year's budget, we were more, a little bit more realistic than 185,000, so.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does that include salaries too, Ms. Mills, or does it just include operational expenses?
Ms. LeBlanc was talking about the revenue.
Right.
I was, yes.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Any other questions?
Ms. Ludwig?
I just have one last item, just because we're mentioning the state housing aid being under budget by 4599. Just in general, maybe we can get an opinion here from Mr. Marshant, when an appropriate time might be to revisit this topic with our school partners, because I think a few of us have said in different sessions that we'd be interested in having some sort of broader conversation, so everyone understands maintenance of effort, where the money goes, comes from, what knock-on effect it has. Is that something that we can... We don't have to decide exactly when tonight, but could we put that on the list of to-dos to figure out when we could have a session like that with them?
To be clear, are you requesting a session for the full town council, or is this for you? I'm not sure what you're proposing.
My understanding is that other councils would likely benefit from this. So if we need to do it in a public session, that would be fine. But there's certainly been some back and forth between us and some of the discussions we've had even during the budget cycle over the last two or three months with Superintendent Levis, the Director Sands, and our understanding of what the knock-on impact of not receiving the funds is and the commitment level there, which I believe some of that has been discussed through the budget process, but I still have a number of open questions on that.
Sure. So just to give you a little bit of an update, Director Mills and I met with Superintendent Levis and Mr. Sands this morning and had a conversation about some of these things, and they did indicate that they had met the current year minimum maintenance requirement expenditures and that they'd be getting us the receipts for submission shortly in the next week or so. And so we're very encouraged by that. They do understand the importance of this issue, and we discussed how we could better plan to budget for the capital expenditures they would like to make in the schools in the next budget year for 2022, 23. I think, you know, we're gonna be having several conversations, and something came up just this evening during our meeting, where they've asked for a special meeting tomorrow morning. And if you're available, I'd be happy to include you on it, but right now it was extended to President Dixon and the solicitor and myself and Ms. Mills. But we're gonna be... We also talked about having a meeting next week, which we're gonna be having several meetings to try to get on top of this, so we can do that.
So I think that Ms. Ludwig is also asking for more clarity about those subjects, but also having some information presented during the public session, so we can start with the meetings that you have already started to plan or have planned, and then we can move that into a public session as soon as possible.
That sounds great. Thank you, President Dixon.
Okay. All right. Any other questions about the April report? Thank you, Ms. Mills. Thank you, Ms. Mills, for catching up. You're, you're, you're getting there. It's, we're almost on target. Uh, and I know it was very difficult because, um, you had a lot of work to do just to set up this format for us, which everyone. Appreciates very much. It's good for us as council people and it's also good for the public. So, thank you. Um, the budget has been is behind us right now and we'll move forward. Mr. The Blank, you have your hand up or not? No? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to item C four, Mr. Ed Wazika. Administrative Officer will give his monthly report. He did send a report via email to us today. Mr. Wazika?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, council members. First, I'd like to apologize. Uh, I had to take, uh, several days off this month. This is, uh, short. Uh, I had some family issues that I had to deal with, so I didn't have a lot of time this month. It was a shorter month. Uh, but Johnson's Pond, I'll begin with that. Uh, in case everybody's noticed, the water level is up. It's where it belongs. It's been maintaining that for the month. We, uh, we monitor that on a daily basis. We're tracking it all. Um, Mr. Gorham is doing his due diligence on the other side of it as well. Uh, we are, we have been fluctuating no more than two inches up or down over full spillway level for the entire month. So we have been, uh. I've received no complaints at all from anyone this month. I've seen some, uh, social media posts that, uh, people obviously didn't know what they were talking about. Saying that the pond is down and that pond has not been down. It's been at full level for this entire month. So, uh, I don't know if anyone has any questions on the pond?
No question.
Okay, the honor roll landfill is the other big issue working on. Uh, I was hoping to have a presentation tonight. From, uh, Balance Rock and, uh, ba-ba-ba, Geo, uh, Watershed Geo. On the actual presentation on, uh, moving forward on this lease. But the fact that the council is actually going to be moving to a full in-person meetings. I felt it was much more appropriate that we do that meeting and bring all these people in. In front of the council, in front of any of the citizens, and hopefully make this a, a separate meeting that deals with it. I think this is gonna be a time-consuming meeting in reference to this, uh, this process and where we're going. I mean, we're, we're looking at, um, revenue, um. Coming in for the town over the next, uh, twenty-five years or so from this. Uh, so there's a lot, there's some issues on it. And I just feel as though it's, it's more appropriate. I spoke to Mr. Marshant about this last week. And made the suggestion then, I just think it's a, a better way to do than try to cram it in after seeing tonight's meeting. I'm really glad I didn't have a minute because you guys are cranking with this meeting. So this would have made things really ugly, but I'd like to make this a separate meeting. Anytime after the twelfth, that week would be good. But whatever works for the council, just advise me and I will work with, uh, all of the parties and we'll get this thing set up so we can finalize this. In the, in the near future.
Mr. Wazika, we are working based on your request today to have an extra meeting. Um, and we'll get back to you as soon as possible.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions on this? All right, thank you. So is, uh, Mr. Marshant called for a meeting the other day. We met myself, Mr. Marshant, Kevin McGee. Stephanie Inn, uh, that, that, uh, Bruce Hagerman, the engineer. As well as Monique Cool discussing the issues and where we're going forward with this. We looked at, uh. Uh, sustainability of the program, financial stability of the program, potential future, um, build-outs of the program. We're gonna be acquiring some additional information over the next couple of weeks and we will be presenting a proposal. And a presentation to the town council on this in the, uh, the very near future. Mr. Marshant, do you agree with that assessment?
That's what we talked about, yes.
Nice. Any other questions on that? I'm trying to make this short and sweet tonight because I know you guys have got a long meeting.
Take as much time as you need, Mr. Ma- Wazika.
And the final one is, uh, the wind turbines. That's been, uh, we've been monitoring those. I have been in contact with Epsilon, uh, Mr. Richard Lampeter. Who, uh, is the rep from there. I'm waiting for him to call me back. On looking at setting something up for that outside monitoring that, uh, the council would like. Uh, the month of, due to, to May. There was actually one-point-two hours of shutdown on turbine six A, which is one of them at the Pacillo. Site affecting, uh. That one particular location on, uh. Uh, that we, we're all familiar with. I don't want to get into names, but, uh, so there was a one-point-two hour shutdown on that turbine. Turbine to, uh, reduce the, uh, the flicker and to maintain that thirty-hour maximum amount of flicker. That's allowed over the course of the year. That, those hours will actually be increasing over the next couple of months. It's designed to shut it down in the worst time of the year when it's generating the most amount of flicker to reduce it. In those periods that will have the most beneficial effect for those residents that are being affected. So that's where that is. Uh, any questions on that?
Well, I have a question because the residents are not. Tell me again, turbine six A is located where?
That's located on the Pacillo property.
On the Pacillo property, the end of Piggy Lane?
Ma'am.
And and that's not the turbine or the turbines that, uh, the residents are complaining about?
Well, that is one of them that affects that area. This, this system is designed to monitor all of them. Remember. It's based on the wind direction, which is the direction of the, of the blades, as well as the sun altitude. Direction as it moves and the system determines that that one this month was the rea, was the one that needed to be. Deactivated during those five different periods for one-point-two hours to reduce the flicker from them coming forward. So it's based on, on, on the science. It's not my doing. That's what's the, the system is determined as the one that needed to be shut down to reduce flicker over there.
I understand that, but perhaps when you speak to that representative from Epsilon, you can discuss. Uh, discuss the, the frustration that residents along Route one oh-two are having with the turbines that are directly behind their home, which. I don't believe that six A is causing as much problem as some of the others, but that's something that needs to be discussed, um, in more detail.
Yes, it will be. That will be.
Um, Mr. The Blank, did you have your hand up?
I, I did. Um, I actually wanted to go back to stewards for, uh, a second if we could. Um, the facilities plan update is actually due in October. Um, I don't know if that was part of your discussion, uh, that you had, Mr. Wazika?
We're having another meeting. We're bringing them in. We're bringing, uh, Western and Sampson in. They will be part of the next one and that's what we'll be discussing on getting that updated with them.
And and how long, or how quick can they turn one of those around? Because that's a very lengthy document.
Why did the? In the past, it hasn't taken that long because they're simply doing an update to the existing document. They're not rewriting that document.
Okay, I, I just thought it would need some town council, uh, approval for areas in which the document says the sewer's gonna go down. That's all. So.
Well, it would be, it would be brought in front of the council, uh, Mr. The Blank. It wouldn't be done by us.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and then, uh, I just wanted to mention that. And then two, um. Have we done anything with getting independent monitoring, um, another different party? Outside of the current parties that exist related to turbines? Have, have we done anything to try to find an independent monitoring company?
I have not. I have been working with Epsilon because Epsilon is the company that we worked with on the whole original process. If you'd like me to get, uh, some quotes from others, I will, uh, I will gladly do that. If that's so, uh, the desire of the council, I'll go with different vendors as well.
That would certainly be my opinion, but, um, we can have a town council vote on a different night, I think.
Just advise, if you do, I will, I will do some research and find a couple of other companies and I will contact them this, this week as well.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions for members of the council for Mr. Wazika? Uh, Ms. Ludwick?
Um, I would like to voice support for finding independent. Uh, representation on that flicker monitoring. So thank you, Council of Blank for, for mentioning that. And Mr. Wazika, can you please put that on the? The to-do list?
It will be. I will be contacting them tomorrow.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Wazika, you did send out an email to people today. Would you please, uh, make your announcement?
I have, I have given you my, uh, my retirement letter. I am, uh, looking at retire, I am scheduled to retire on August twenty-seventh, the end of, the end of the month. So I've got two months left. Between now and, and my retirement. I, uh. I, I've thought a lot about it. It's taken a lot of time to decide what to do. Um, I've lost a lot of people recently that I know, people I've dealt with. And, um, I'm sixty, I'll be sixty-three in August. And I wanna, I wanna spend time with my family, my, my, my kids, my grandkids, my wife. Before, hoping that something doesn't happen soon, but I've lost too many people. Young and I want to, uh, I want to be able to spend time with them. I've loved my time with the town. I've enjoyed everything I've, I've done here. I appreciate all the assistance. And everything I've received from all the various town councils. Uh, the, all of the employees, uh, with heavy heart that I, uh, submitted that. But, uh, the other day, uh, certain individual passing was the final straw for me that made me say it was time to do it. So, uh, I thank everyone for, for everything and, uh. I'm gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna kill me leaving, but, uh, I think it's what's best right now.
Thank you, Mr. Wazika. I'm very disappointed that you will not be with us, uh, for longer than the end of August. Um, but I'm sure that closer to the end of August, we will have an appropriate, um. Uh, celebration for you and we can, um, talk a lot about the accomplishments that you've had in your long time here in, um. Coventry and how many years has that been total?
It's been seventeen, ma'am, and, uh, that's really not necessary. I, uh, I appreciate that, but, uh, I did what I did for the town. I don't expect anything. I don't need anything. Thank you. Just a, uh, out of, I just, uh, goodbye words for me.
Okay, well, we will, we will do an appropriate, an appropriate send-off for you. Uh, but thank you very much for all the service that you have given to the town. Many roles stepping in at a time when people were not available and you stepped in and. Push yourself immediately into a budget. Mr. Marshant can attest to how difficult it is to put together a budget and you needed to do that immediately. So thank you so much and. You haven't heard the last from us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, um, one thing that I forgot to mention when Ms. Mills was making her presentation and that is that. The town has received its annual financial audit and we will be discussing that at our July meeting. So I just want people to know, especially the public, if you're interested in our annual financial audit, if we have a new auditor. Um, and it's a very, very detailed report and we will be discussing that in July. Uh, continuing on item D-one licenses for discussion and or action. Um, Madam Clerk, please read the agenda item.
Application for new pool table license for New Star Laundromat LLC, doing business as New Star. Laundromat sixteen-twelve Moose Neck Hill Road.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Gorham, can you, we discussed whether, uh, we didn't even know much about pool, uh, pool tables. Can you just tell us what the law says about pool tables?
The law says that the town can license them, so that's what we're doing here.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to grant this application?
Good motion.
Thank you, Mr. The Blank. May I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Lima. Any discussion? Ms. Ludwick?
Some of the information I was interested in is not necessarily in the packet, so when we grant things like pool tables, for example. Um, I'd be interested to know, did, I mean, it's a laundromat, so I assume the answer is no, but are they serving alcohol at this laundromat?
No.
Do we know? Okay. Do we know the, the hours of operation for the laundromat?
Um, we can look into that. I don't have them handy.
Well, give me just a moment here. I, I did notice that, um. The police don't have any issues. So, so that would be good. My, the only reason for my questioning is just, I wouldn't want to create. You know, a bar-like situation in an area that used to just be a laundromat. So my. My questioning is just to better understand how this would affect the residents or, or groups in that area. I, I don't think anyone is right by it. If I take a look at it online, I think this is. Um, it's far enough away from, from the residences in, in general. It's kind of in the cluster, it's in a cluster of businesses. So I. I don't, I won't need the, I won't need the hours to vote.
Okay, fine. Any other questions that people may have, members may have on this application? Okay, roll call vote, um, if you, uh. Madam Clerk, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Hillary Lima?
Yes.
Uh, Kimberly, I'm sorry, Jennifer Lovey?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Ian Dixon?
Yes, foyer's no nades. The motion passes. Uh, agenda item.
President Dixon, if I may, um, I don't know if you were planning this, but, uh, just like a. Mini two-minute recess if you, if we could before we get into the meat of the agenda would be much appreciated.
Absolutely.
Yes, bio break. I don't know how the right way to say it, but that would be great.
I think we could just say a short break. What, what five minutes do? It's eight oh-four. How about eight-ten?
You drive a hard bargain, but I'll take it.
Okay, okay, run.
Thank you.
Okay, please, please put your, um, put yourself on no video and no audio for this short period of time. Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. Is Ms. Martini with us this evening? We'll have to, since Ms. Martini is not with us, we'll have to wait for Mr. Marshon to come back online. Mr. Marshon, with Ms. Marti, will Ms. Martini be joining us this evening?
No, Director Mills will handle the, any questions you may have.
Okay, fine. The next agenda item is E1 Tax Assessors Additions and Abatements for May twenty twenty one. This is reference pages sixty six to sixty seven. The resolution for this was emailed to us today, June twenty eighth at about four fifteen PM. Ms. Mills, do you have any comments about this report?
I have no comments, but it's just, it's a, a business that no longer resides in Coventry. So they, they shouldn't have been assessed taxes to begin with.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
May I have a motion to accept this report?
Make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. Roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Hillary Lima?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Ian Dixon?
Yes, foyer's no nays. Thank you. Agenda E2. May I have a motion to appoint the following applicant to the Coventry Housing Authority for a five-year term expiring May first, twenty twenty six. Ms. Maureen Genzek.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. May I, may I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Hillary Lima?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LeBlanc?
Yes.
Ian Dixon?
Yes, foyer's no nays. The motion passes. We will not be appointing any other members to the Coventry Housing Authority. No, will we appoint anyone to the zoning board of review as an alternate this evening as previously announced? Agenda item E4, the following agenda item is to award bids for the Department of Public Works Town Council, reference pages seventy to one hundred seventy nine. Members of the public, this is to award bids for the following, and I'll read the list. Emergency equipment rental, plumbing services, winter sand, pest control services, cold asphalt patch, hot asphalt patch, electrical services, earth materials, emergency towing service, drainage pipes and flared ends, HDPE tubing, erosion controls and castings, and heating and air conditioning services. Mr. McGee, are you, I don't see you. Mr. Marshon, are you going to speak for Mr. McGee?
Yes, I will. He's on vacation this week.
Okay, would you like to speak to this agenda item, please?
Yes, these items are budgeted for the regular expenses and materials and supplies that Public Works uses throughout the year. Many of these items are better purchased in the summertime, like the winter sand, when you're not in the middle of a snowstorm.
Thank you. Now, members of the council, do you wish to make a motion to award all the bids, second, and then discussion? Or then vote, or vote on each resolution or award at a time? Can we do them as a batch or one at a time? What is your preference?
I'll make a motion to review all the following bids together in one vote. And if needed, we can separate later if there, if it becomes a problem.
Okay. So we have a motion to accept all bids that are listed on our packet page seventy through seventy one. May I have a, a motion to award these bids?
Can I have a discussion first?
We'll have a motion, a second.
We have a motion. We're looking for a second.
Okay, you said award the bids. I just want to make sure that there's going to be discussion after said. I will second it.
Okay, thank you. We, we had a motion to do it as a batch. There wasn't a green. Now we have the motion on the batching. So we have a motion. We have a second discussion. The discussion is now open for each or any item. Mr. The Blank, question?
There's definitely a lot of information that was provided to us, so I appreciate that. I just didn't know that there's a lot of resolutions. It's actually twelve. I didn't know if there was a ballpark estimate of the total amount that if we were to approve all of these, how much it is actually going to cost us? An estimate. I know some of it are based on hours, but I, I just don't want to be blindly approving something where I don't know total dollar figure, or at least a ballpark of what we're approving.
I had that question myself. Mr. Marshon, can you provide us any data? And I know that sometimes it may be a little bit difficult because we don't know how much electrical services we may need or asphalt, et cetera, but this is a long list of bids.
Yeah, and the way these bids are structured were bidding, they were bidding on the hourly rates. And so we're not bidding on the total amount of services we are going to consume next year because that will vary from month to month and it will be up to the Finance Director, Director of Public Works and myself to review the, the expenditures and keep the overall budget within budget. So all these items are budgeted within Public Works, but how much sand we end up needing to purchase from this bid will depend on how many snow events we're dealing with throughout the year. And so I, I don't have a way of quantifying what the total impact of these will be next year because these are the bids based on the supply rates.
Mr. Marsh?
Well, I guess. I guess, I mean, even like a three-year look back would tell you how much we've spent in sand the last three years. So I just, I was just looking for a ballpark.
Yeah, I, I can furnish that information from the budget.
Yeah, I was going to ask, there must be line items for these supplies. So I'm wondering what has been budgeted for twenty one, twenty two?
Do you want me to, do you want me to pull that up in the budget?
Yes, if you could, please.
Yeah. So my second question, my question is this, for some of these items, there is one bid and for some there are two bids. And where there were two bids, both of them are listed. So did we not receive bids for more than one vendor for several of these items?
As for the bidding process, Joanne, do you happen to know about that? Because I know with some items, they can be sole sourced or we're buying it off the, the combined advertised bid list that the state or national puts out. Others, we might get two bids, two bidders and not get a third. And so we will list all the bids that we received. So that would be the reason for having single bids for some and to a bit more than one bid for others.
So can, can I speak now or?
Yes, certainly.
Okay, so just to, to go through these resolutions real quick, the emergency rental, that's with Secotia and Rambone Services. So those are the, the rental of emergency equipment during a weather emergency. To, to give a ballpark number on that, I don't have that available. The plumbing services, to look at what we spent on plumbing last year. I don't see that separately. Give me two seconds. I think I'll find it here. Okay, plumbing services last year were only two thousand in total. So this, this resolution two is based on the, you know, the various services at that two-year award at an hourly rate. The winter sand, last year we spent, well, actually, this, this year, this budget coming up is budgeted for forty thousand. In the past, we've spent twenty, FY twenty twenty, we spent roughly twenty seven thousand. I don't have the total number for twenty, year ending twenty one. Pest controls, services, again, this is like on a need be basis. Pest controls under exterminating, let's see, services, another two thousand dollar budgeted on number for FY twenty two. Johnston asphalt, cold patch, I think that's probably around sixty to ninety. I don't see it right handy, but give me a second. I think that, that coal patch is in that contracted services in the budget and that's about sixty. I can't a hundred percent testify to that, but I believe that's where it's at. And then there's the hot asphalt patch, purchase of potholes, berms and pavement. Not sure where that is in the current budget. Again, most of these concrete, concrete, excuse me, asphalt patches are usually roughly under, under a hundred thousand because our budget wasn't that high for the, the patches next year. And then the Richmond sand and stone and purchase of earth materials, stone, gravel, loam, sand. So that would be our, in the, on the budget, sandstone and gravel. And that proposal next year was roughly going to be, well, exactly forty thousand for FY twenty twenty two. That takes care of the earth materials on number eight. Number nine, emergency towing services. So that, let's see where that is. I know there's, there's an actual line for towing services. Give me two seconds. I could find it. I know this, this one is usually not that, that high. I don't see that tone right handy here. Let me circle back to that. Let's see. Yeah, I don't, I know it's out there because I've, I remember. Okay, hold on. Towing services for the FY twenty two budget is thirty five twenty. So that would take care of the number nine. Resolution number ten, drainage pipes, flared ends, to purchase drainage pipes, flared for the Public Works project. So drainage, let's see, that's going to be in probably roads and bridges. I would assume that's under erosion control. That was budgeted for two thousand for FY twenty two, but I guess that would be the best place where that was, or either that manhole frames and covers. I'm not sure if that's part of the, the, no, that's drainage pipe. So it could be though. That's seventy eight hundred.
Those could also be in the sewer fund.
Yes, and we do have a line just for pipes. I just found it. That was budgeted for ten thousand even. So that's probably what that is. Resolution ten was, is budgeted for ten, appears to be budgeted for ten thousand. And then we have tubing, erosion controls and casting. I guess that's the erosion, erosion control that I was just stating earlier, which was two thousand. So two thousand is for number eleven. And number twelve, heating and air conditioning service, HVAC. Most likely is going to be in the building. So HVAC, I don't know where that is. I'm not sure where, I, I mean, I, maybe it's, the HVAC is plant, plant equipment, maybe? Twenty two thousand? I'm not sure where that's budgeted, Madam President, but.
Maybe facilities.
In the facilities.
And what about number seven, electrical services? I didn't catch that number.
Okay, so electrical services throughout the buildings. So so we have electrical services budgeted for three thousand even.
Okay. So it sounds like for each of these items, there is a line item in the budget. And they were all budgeted. And I did a quick calculation, but I rely on my mathematician on the council, Mr. The Blank, but I think it comes up to around three hundred thousand. Is that correct, Mr. The Blank?
Let's say that's the ballpark, yes.
Ballpark, okay.
I do have one additional question, President Dixon, if you don't mind.
Of course.
I noticed that a lot of these, almost all of them are either two or three-year awards. Is there any reason why we're, we're extending these contracts out that far?
I, I don't know. I, I would assume it's past practice, but I think this is part of the financial policies that Lisa and I will be looking at as we develop them.
Great, because I mean, typically you decide two or three years to get better rates in the long run, but I, I just don't know if that's what's happening here. So just wanted to throw that out. Thank you, President Dixon. And thank you, Ms. Mills.
You're welcome. Thank you for helping us, Ms. Mills. Mrs. Lima has a question. She's on you.
I only took my hand down. So along the lines of Mr. The Blank's question, I was just curious how these rates compared to previous years that we've seen. Obviously, that's a lot to, to go through, but I just was curious if materials like this were seeing increases in price like we've seen because of the pandemic with shortage of supplies and wasn't sure if that kind of nuance, you know, reared its head here with these rates. I just, you know, don't know if these rates are comparable to what we've seen in past years, if it's been a steady increase, you know, with inflate, regular inflation, or if the pandemics had an effect at all. And my other question was in relation to the resolutions five and six. I know that prior to my time on the council, the, the town council approved awarding, I believe, a machine that relates to this. So can you just confirm, is it just the materials for this hot and cold machine? Or, oh, okay, all right, just want to make sure. But I was just curious how these.
As to the historic. As to the historical bids, I don't have those in the packet. And Mr. McGee would be certainly more experienced and able to speak to how these have compared because he's been here longer. And, you know, I I'm not sure how these prices compared to two years ago, honestly. But we can look into that and get you an answer. And as far as preparing resolutions like this in the future, I'll be sure that we have the budgeted amount for each item listed in the backup so that you can have these this information readily available.
Yeah, no, my my, I guess the point I'm driving at for my question was just say, you know, we're talking about, I'm just making a general assumption that the pandemic has related maybe to these materials and increase in price because there's a high demand. So it would relate to increased rates. So if we're going to lock in with these higher than average rates for two or three years, just wanted to see if that was the case or or not, if we're able to tell that.
Okay, are there any other questions for members of the council, Ms. Ludwig?
I think this is a question for Mr. Gorham possibly, but, you know, I'm not a hot asphalt expert here. I'm not an expert on towing or any of this. So some of the prices that were mentioned are well under the the $10,000, I think. Process that needs to come through town council for approval. So I'm just curious, is the only reason they're coming to us for approval? Because the overall, you know, process of the charter says that all public bids have to come through town council? Or what? Why is this coming to our level? Why can't Ben approve these, for example?
You could probably set a policy where he could. I think the limitation in the charter is. I don't think there's a a number on it. There is an ordinance that specifies a sum of less than 10,000 when things have to go to bid. I believe that's in the ordinances.
I believe that's in state law, too.
Yeah, well.
Whenever you have purchases that are by the hour or by the unit and you're approving them, one of the concerns is, do you cross that threshold at some point? And you don't know it. And so to be safe, it's better to have the bids approved and properly bid out so that you don't run a run afoul of that, you know, 10 months down the road. When you have an unexpected expense that exceeded exceeded your budget and the threshold.
Okay. Any other questions by members of the council? Okay, we have a motion and we have a second to approve the award for all bids that are listed on page 70 to 71 of our packet, which includes 12 resolutions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Hillary Lee. Yes. Jennifer Ludwig? Yes. Amy LeBlanc?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes, four yeas, no nays. The motion passes. Agenda item E5. Reference pages 180 to 183. The resolution is on page 180. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution on page 180.
Do you want me to read the agenda item first?
You can read the resolution.
Okay. That the town council hereby affirms the award of a purchase by the town manager pursuant to Article 10, Section 10.23 of the Town Charter for the sole source procurement of a STC 11,000 storm scepter to contact engineer engineered solutions, 8 Noble Street, New Newburyport, Mass. For the Upper Dam Pond Rhode Island DEM watershed restoration project, the purchase is funded by the Rhode Island DEM grant program agreement.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Marshon, could you please speak to this before we get a motion on the table?
Yeah, so there's a plan to improve the watershed around Upper Dam Pond. And the storm scepter unit is to help alleviate stormwater runoff and pollution from entering into the pond. This is a grant-funded expense with Rhode Island DEM. And because it is a unique unit that's specific to this project, it was sole sourced.
Thank you. All right, may I have a motion to authorize the, let me see. Authorize the expenditure of 102 million, I'm sorry, 102,743 with a lead time of eight weeks for delivery for the purchase as a storm scepter as listed on agenda item five.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. LeBlanc. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lima. Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Do I have a question first, please?
Certainly.
Thanks for leaving. So I just want to check. So the cost is the 102,743. Do we have a grant for the full amount, the 102? Because I I know Kevin has talked about before, I just don't remember the number.
It's fully funded.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We've had a discussion by Mr. Marshon, questions. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Hillary Lima?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig? Yes. Amy LeBlanc?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes, four yeas, no nays. The motion passes. The next item is E6. The res- reference pages 184 to 200. The resolution is on page 184. Madam Clerk, just read the res- the agenda item for us.
Authorizing the expenditures of funds in the amount of 27,740.76 from the communications account to purchase a new communications lodging recorder for the police and fire communication center at 60 Wood Street.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Make a motion.
I'll second that.
You have a blank? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Chief Heiss, would you please speak to us about this request?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So basically what's happening is Verizon's taking out their copper wires and they replaced them with fiber wires. And in addition to that, E911 is upgrading their services and stuff. And with the current items we have now, the logging systems, they won't it can't compatible with digital, they're analyzed right now.
Hey, council members, any questions on this request? Mr. LeBlanc?
Oh, thank you, President Dixon. The resolution speaks to fire communications as well. And we made sure that this is going to work on the fire side as well, not only the police. Just wanted to ask that.
Yes, it will. It will work with both.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes, I saw on the agenda item, it says from the communications account. Can we just confirm what exactly that is or if that's a specific line item in the police budget? Please, thank you.
Yes, that's a line item in the police budget. That's where we'd have all our communication stuff like radios and things like that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Was this already budgeted for your 2122 budget?
It's it's in the budget, the money money's in the budget for it.
Okay, fine. Any other questions for the chief? All right, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Hillary Lima? Yes. Jennifer Ludwig? Yes. Amy LeBlanc?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes, motion passes, four yeas, no nays. Thank you very much, Chief, for staying with us so long this evening. We appreciate it. We're now on the consent agenda for discussion interaction F1. Madam Clerk, would you please read the agenda item?
Discussion and or action date for town council meetings to start in person meetings and conditions.
Okay. Governor McGee has extended the executive order to July 23rd. We're not clear on whether we may have hybrid meetings in person with a Zoom component for our residents and our council members at this point in time. Mrs. Lima has been following a bill which is in the assembly. Would you give us an update on that bill, Mrs. Lima? You're on mute.
I believe at this time, the version of the bill with sub A has passed the House, which means that the sunset on the ability to be able to meet virtually only is going to be in 2023. So that's where that stands. I would like to speak on this separately, aside from just giving that update you requested.
Absolutely. All right, I would like to have a motion from the council so that we can start a discussion. So the the question is, we can simply have a discussion or we could we could actually have a motion on the table. And that is, when would you like to start in-person meetings and the conditions?
I'd like to make a motion that we start in-person meetings in September.
The first meeting in September? Okay.
So sorry, can we ask? One more time, so and then if someone seconds that and then we would discuss about what the possible opportunities there?
Yes.
I'll second Mr. LeBlanc's motion.
Okay. Okay, it's open for discussion now. The motion is to start in-person meetings, which also means, what it means also is that Mr. Gorham has a hand up. It means that based on the bill, if it passes in in the House and then goes to the Senate, that we would be able to have hybrid meetings, which means that we would be in person. We would still have a Zoom component so that members of the public who would like to come in on Zoom would still have that opportunity. They would not have to come into the chamber itself. Of course, our meetings would still be recorded and be available on YouTube. So that's how we would start if we were to have in-person meetings. Okay, questions, Mr. LeBlanc?
Not a question. I just want to clarify why I said September. I I said September so that the town can communicate effectively to residents, that they can start going in chambers. We can also create a policy. Because I'm sure there's going to be policies of who can be in there, how many people can be in the room and all that good stuff, as well as IT getting set up to do Zoom and in person at the same time. So it gives us a little bit of a lead time, but I also, I've been fielding a lot of emails and calls on this specific topic, asking us, you know, why are other towns in person right now and why are we not? So I at least want to be able to tell them that we are working on it and there's a solid at least month that we will be in person. So I just wanted to provide a little bit of clarity there.
Right, and I just want to mention that the question has come up and how would we be able to have in-person meetings, still do Zoom and have the recording? And Mr. Cody, I'm sorry, Mr. Horton has already done a test run to ensure that we would be able to have a hybrid meeting. So we know that that will work. Secondly, the conditions under which we would do this, we would say that we would be following all Rhode Island Department of Health regulations, which right now are people who are vaccinated do not have to wear a mask. People who are not vaccinated need to have a mask when they come into the chamber council. And also, they really, we would be putting the seats at least three to six feet apart. I'll have to check on the regulations. Mr. Marshon has already done an estimate of how many seats would be available to be in the chamber, come in the chamber. And we believe that there would be sufficient number, even if we separate the seats. So we would simply say that we are following Rhode Island Department of Health guidelines. That allows us to adjust as the guidelines change. Mrs. Lima?
Thank you. So just a little bit further on House Bill 5891 sub A. This bill received significant opposition in its current form in committee. And what that means is there were several letters submitted in opposition to specifically the sunset of this legislation, citing that it was excessive. So the sunset meaning that theoretically bodies could continue to meet just virtually only or in the hybrid models until July 1st, 2023. And once that sun sets, if there is no, if the the government doesn't address it, folks would have to return to in-person only meetings following July 1. Starting on January 1st of 2022, this bill states that public bodies should be operating within the hybrid meetings or virtual only meetings and no exclusively in-person meetings by that time. Just to discuss the good government groups who are in opposition of the length of the sunset and allowing the virtual only for so long. Some of their opposition points include the following. The they don't approve of the the virtual only model in that it just overall inhibits the ability to to participate for the purposes of accountability. The good government groups like Common Cause, ACLU, et cetera, they want the accountability of the the representatives or the council members in person. The other piece is that we're kind of going into uncharted ground here. The Open Meetings Act doesn't currently address remote only meetings and we're on kind of just borrowed information and we're kind of doing this as we go along. So the government and other ethics boards or good government groups were still learning about best practices for remote only and hybrid as well. And we don't know the ways that people could or bodies could abuse or remote only meetings. The other piece too is they don't like the lack of contact that the press is able to have, while not one of the bigger issues that they've outlined. There's also some outlaw, the page two of a letter that I could share with you from a couple of House members and senators talks about some weak points and loopholes with this bill as is with respect to posting meeting recordings, minutes or agendas, which right now, again, as I mentioned, the opens meet Open Meetings Act still doesn't address that when it comes to remote. And this this letter overall wants there to be stronger language in the legislation, which there isn't about the public having the right to attend meetings, hybrid meetings. Right now, that's not clear. So it's basically stating that if the body does go hybrid, the public should have the option to attend no matter what, which is not clear in the bill as written. Aside from this legislation, I just wanted to remark, I don't, I don't think it's any secret that the electorate and Coventry is very cynical and very jaded. And I think that taking a step to going to back to in-person with a hybrid model is a huge step toward earning the trust back of our residents in town and taking that step to show more transparency and another step of transparency that this council can take. So while, yes, Zoom is convenient, and I've seen multiple people talk, speak to that in other circles outside of Coventry. As I've mentioned before, not everyone has access to to technology. Not everyone is as astute with the use of technology. And it's important to know that when going to a hybrid model, we do not lose the ability for those folks to continue to participate in Zoom. If anything, we're adding the ability for more people to to participate, should they choose to in an in-person model. And just to to be quite frank, if we as council members are doing things like going out to eat, going to the grocery store, going to events in town, we and and then say that we're uncomfortable meeting in a hybrid model. I think that sends a poor message to our constituents. And I'd be strongly in favor if Cody is saying that the setup works and he's well versed in how it can be administered. Then I, you know, I would, I'm, as I'm second in the motion in favor of getting. then I, you know, I would, I'm, as I'm second in the motion, in favor of getting back to in-person, or should I say, hybrid meetings in September. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lima. Ms. Ludwig?
I have a general question. So if we're going to go back in person, is this tonight a discussion just for town council, or also for boards and commissions?
Right now, it is for town council meetings. That's what's on the agenda.
Okay. Because it is a question that I get often on the, the boards and commission side as well. So we probably want to follow that up in the next meeting if possible, put some sort of guidance there.
I will put it on the agenda. Thank you.
And then just from personal side, by increasing access and giving people opportunity to either show up in person or come in on the screen, that just allows more people access to us. So I am in favor of a hybrid opportunity. I think the motion that was put forward, though, I believe only said going back in person in September as opposed to any type of hybrid opportunities. So.
If you'd like to add an amendment to the motion, the motion is to begin in-person meetings, the first meeting in September 2021. If you'd like to amend that to starting hybrid meetings in person for the council, hybrid allowing Zoom to continue, but also recording, of course, our in-person meetings. You can add that as an amendment if you'd like.
So maybe we can talk about one further point. In a hybrid model, are we talking about hybrid only for the public, or also for our counselors?
Hybrid for the public, if you want to add it. I believe the bill that Ms. Ludwig referred to did say that members of the council could meet via Zoom, but as long as a majority were there in person. But that gets a little bit more complicated, but I believe the bill does allow that. In other words, if one of, with one of us, for example, if you were on vacation, we were having a meeting, and you would like to participate in the meeting, you would be allowed to come in via Zoom and be a participating member of the group.
I'm also thinking not just about vacation, but, you know, as the country opens back up, there are several of us who, while based in Rhode Island, you know, work for national companies. And so just to guarantee to be in, in one spot with as many meetings as we've been putting on the agenda, it may at least be smart to start with hybrid for both council and counselors. And then maybe that's a, a item that we say, you know, we go online with what you were just mentioning, President Dixon, about having the majority in-house and using it a bit more as an exception as opposed to a, a regular occurrence.
I'm going to ask Mr. Gorm, just to speak to this issue. We can have a hybrid model. I believe the bill that is before the Assembly does allow some members of the council not to be present, but I want to clarify with you if that is true or not.
I believe, I've read the last version of the hybrid bill, but I haven't read the more recent one. I, my recollection was that it, it didn't allow some to be absent, but I could be wrong. In other words, some to be voting remotely, but I could be wrong about that. Just a couple of things. Until the bill passes, the governor's order, which expires on July 23rd, controls. So you, you know, if this doesn't pass the Senate and get signed by the governor, you could be looking at in-person meetings a lot sooner, just for what it's worth. I think
Go ahead.
It looks pretty probable that it's going to pass the Senate, but it hasn't. So the only other thing is, I looked at the charter, there's nothing in the charter that really requires presence. But I do think that it is up to a majority of the council as its own legislative body who decide if we're going to have Zoom or in-person. I really think that's the prerogative of the council. The General Assembly can allow it. They can allow you to do it remotely. They can rely, they can allow you to do hybrid. But I really don't know if, if the General Assembly said you can do it hybrid, but then the council decided, well, we want everyone there, everybody at the meeting. I think if the council makes that decision, that decision controls.
Okay.
Because all the General Assembly is saying is, you don't have to. But that doesn't mean that the, the town council can't decide that, at least among themselves, they must. They must attend.
Okay, so right now, we have a motion on the table to have in-person meetings starting in September with the condition that we would follow the Rhode Island Department of Health guidelines, whatever they may be at the time of the meeting. And that we would follow a hybrid model that would allow Zoom to continue so that members of the public would still be able to participate as they are now. But we would also, they would also be able to come in person, but they'd also be able to participate by Zoom. So if you would like to make the amendment for a hybrid model, then this would be the time now. Otherwise, the motion stands that we start in-person meetings in September. What is the pleasure of the council?
I'd like to make a motion to amend to include the hybrid component, so to return to in-persons in September. Unless, of course, this, that bill that you've been mentioning doesn't pass, like, we, we can bring this up again, I assume, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so the, the, the bill basically is, is more about the sunset of being able to meet virtually only or hybrid. So, so this is just saying that you, you don't, basically, it's, the bill is trying to enforce that there's some hybrid or remote option for the next two years. So hybrid obviously is within that purview. What's, what it's saying is by January 1st of 2022, you, there can be no body that's meeting just in person. It's, it's supposed, it's trying to allow time for bodies who need to get to the hybrid phase to acquire the equipment or the infrastructure to be able to do so. So, and I, and I would be in favor of your amendment to change the language to be a hybrid meeting, because that's what officially it's supposed to be. So I'll second that motion.
We have a motion to amend the original motion to say that the council will follow a hybrid model. We have a second. Any other discussion? If you're in favor of adding the amendment to the motion, please raise your hand. Four yays, no nays. Thank you. All right, the motion that we're going to vote on now is that the town, town, town council, Coventry Town Council will return to in-person meetings, starting with the first meeting in September, while on a hybrid model and all Rhode Island Department of Health guidelines.
Um, question?
Mrs. Lima?
Yes, so should we assume that there will be further discussion on logistics and specifics? Or are we just saying we're all set? Because I know it sounds like there'll be some other things to consider as far as, or are we just assuming that will be taken care of by the administration as far as?
What, what specifics are you thinking about at this point in term?
It sounds like head count or mask policy, or the, or counselors attending virtually? Or is that all just going to be taken care of behind the scenes with the administration? Are we assuming this is just it? Just wanted to, just for clarity.
We're not going to take care of anything behind the scenes. I mean, everything will be open. We're dedicated to doing that. When we say we'll follow all Rhode Island Department of Health guidelines, it means that all people who are vaccinated do not have to wear a mask inside or outside. People who are not vaccinated, who are inside, need to wear a mask. This is Rhode Island Department of Guidelines. And it is a, a specific condition about sitting, sitting, I think it's three feet apart. And Mr. Marshon has identified that we would be able to fit how many people into the room?
Sixty members of the public plus staff in the council.
Correct. So those, those are the conditions, and that's what we're stating publicly, will be the conditions when we resume in-person meetings.
One last thing. Yes, so just as Mr. Gorm had mentioned, in the chance that this doesn't pass before the session concludes, which doubt it won't, but I believe the executive order to extend remote only, I think we talked about this, President Dixon, is until July 23rd. So that's just a date for everyone to keep in their mind as we move forward and watch this legislation. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for the reminder. And also, we have a request to have a special meeting, I think around July 12th, something like that. So between now and July 12th, as things change, we can always add this to the agenda if there are some changes that we have to make. Does that seem agreeable to people?
Yep.
So we will, we will keep abreast of this. Mrs. Lima's been doing a great job in keeping abreast of it. I'm on, on bill tracker myself, so we're keeping track of what we need to do. And we will announce it to the public as, as we know it and, and we discuss it. So right now, we have a motion, I'll just repeat it, a motion for the Coventry Town Council to return to in-person meetings September 2021, following the hybrid model and all Rhode Island Department of Health guidelines. Okay, Madam Clerk? Roll call vote, please.
Hillary Lima?
Yes.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Amy LeBlanc?
Yes.
Ann Dixon?
Yes. Four yays, no nays. The motion passes. Thank you so much for the great discussion. The next item is item F2. And Mr. DBAs from the Rhode Island Public Expenditure Council is here through an invitation by Mr. Marshon to give us some information about restricted restrictions on the use of COVID funds. The agenda item does speak to restrictions on wind, wind energy development funds, but I don't think that his comments apply to that. Is that correct, Mr. DBAs?
Yes, I'm not, I'm not prepared to talk about that. That was a surprise to me.
Okay. I just want to introduce you. Mr. Michael DBAs began serving as president and CEO of the Rhode Island Public Expenditure Council in January 2020. Prior to his appointment as president and CEO, Michael served for five years as Director of Administration for the state of Rhode Island. His prior experience includes senior positions in government relations for fidelity investments, as well as serving as Chief of Staff for Rhode Island Governor Lincoln Elman. Michael is a graduate of Boston College and the University of Pennsylvania Law School. Welcome. We're very anxious to hear what you have to tell us about use of COVID funds.
Madam, Madam President, that was an interesting agenda item just before, members of the council, and good to see you again, Mr. Gorm. I'm going to share my screen. I'm going to be as brief as possible. I know you've had a long night. Hope that works. So thank you for the opportunity to talk about the American Rescue Plan Act funds. The Rhode Island Public Expenditure Council, just a couple of sentences on that, is, we've been around a long time. We're a nonpartisan, nonprofit, public policy research organization. Among the areas of focus, we are interested in municipal finance. We're doing a series of reports on city and town finances. We published introductory report a couple of months ago. It's not yet on the bestseller list, but I think it's a good report, and I recommend the reading. It's, uh, it's on riotpec.org. Wanted to just, I just only have a few slides. Wanted to just go through some of the numbers. So the American Rescue Plan Act is a big piece of legislation with a lot of, a lot of different funding sources. The one that concerns the, the town of Coventry is called the Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. That's $130.2 billion in the whole bill. Rhode Island local governments are getting a little over half, half a billion, which is a lot of money. The state fiscal fund, by the way, is about 1.1 billion, so the state's getting a, a big chunk of money too. I think I have these numbers right. Town of Coventry is expected to receive 8.6 million in total. The, the town's direct municipal allocation is 1.8 million, and I've been told that should be paid next week. And then there is 3.4 million, which is actually the town's county allocation, since we don't have counties in Rhode Island. That's been appropriated in the FY22 budget that's going through the General Assembly, and will be paid 30 days after the state receives the funding from the US Treasury. And my understanding is that the remaining 3.4 million has not been appropriated and is not intended to be appropriated in this budget, so the General Assembly's decided to hold that back. The funds need to be expended by the end of 2024. However, the legislation talks about it being committed, so there's actually two more years after that that you can spend the money as long as you've incurred it or committed it. And that's important, because I think the council could be very deliberate with these funds. Obviously, you may have some urgent needs, but you do have a fair amount of time. And then I put the, the public school, Coventry Public School fundings here. They're getting, the, the district is getting 5.4 million from the American Rescue Plan Act in addition to 2.4 million previously. So that's, that's a lot of, of funding on a relative basis. And obviously, you should all be mindful in your spending for schools that this money is available. I think there was discussion earlier in the meeting about that. There are maintenance of effort requirements for the town. I don't believe they've been relaxed. There was legislation in the General Assembly to relax that, and I, I think there's been some opposition. One of, you know, one of the potential risks, and it was mentioned, is that the school district, not, not Coventry, but that school districts may spend these money, these monies to increase their base, which this is one-time funding, and that would not be necessarily, necessarily responsible, because the, the funding is going to go away at some point. So something to just keep in mind. What you can use the funds for, there's some very specific uses, and then there's some things that are vague. So this is, this is from the federal law. It's to respond to the public health emergency. And then there's this phrase, or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses, nonprofits, and impacted industries. So that phrase, negative economic impacts, can be read broadly or narrowly. There are regulations out there, but it's still not, you know, not super clear as to how you, how you satisfy that. There's a premium pay provision here that I've, that I've not seen too many governmental agencies looking that closely at. The, the third one here is actually the revenue loss, which I'll talk about in a minute. It's, it's, it's phrased this way, to pay for government services that you couldn't afford to pay for because you lost money. And then water, sewer, and broadband are particularly called out in the legislation. The funds cannot be used for extraordinary payments to a pension fund, but unlike the state, which cannot use these funds to directly or indirectly reduce taxes, municipalities can do that. So just, just know that that's out there. And then I just had more. I just wanted to talk a little bit about, I'm going to give, I'm going to provide some unsolicited advice for what it's worth. These are policy decisions, and you are the elected town representative, so this is actually left to you. But, and, and this is still early in the process, so people are still getting used to this. But the first piece of advice would be that you should maximize the revenue loss provision. So there is a provision that you can use this money to basically plug your budget, and it, it has a formula which, which I don't even think is available yet. They're still doing some of these numbers, but you use your average revenue growth or 4.1%. So I think, I, from my point of view, it's sort of a no-brainer that you should do this, because once you put that money in your budget, you have maximum discretion to do with it what you want. So, so that's not probably going to be a lot of money for the town of Coventry. But I don't, I don't know that for, for a fact, but a lot of your, a lot of your tax revenue streams are relatively stable. I don't think you're a large hotel, you know, hotel, restaurant tax community. Then the other to think about is water, sewer, broadband. Because they're specifically called out in the law, it's kind of a safe harbor. So if you So if you, you know, if there is a particular project or something, it's, it's worth thinking of because the compliance issues are a little bit simpler. Their public health expenses are another category. These are, these have typically been nearly all, or all been picked up by the federal government or the state, which the state has done it actually with all federal funds. I don't, I haven't seen much in the way of expenses that has not been covered at the state level by the federal government for COVID. But that would be things like vaccination or getting the ward out, or, you know, PPE or some of the things you're doing with meetings, that, you know, certainly those kind of things can be used. The other is small business assistance and other assistance. And what's, what's a little bit tricky here is that the, you got to meet certain requirements and, and, you know, show either individual broadly that, that, that communities are impacted. So, so there is, you know, there is a real concern about worrying about compliance here, and my reading is you can use these funds to help you with compliance and administration. But it's, there's a lot of reporting, the public bidding rules are, are similar to federal funding, and so you got, you got a lot of requirements here. So I would, I would, I would, you know, recommend that you, that you consult with folks and work with other cities and towns, because this is, this is pretty complicated. I mean, the state has a whole office they've set up just to do compliance on this. And then the last thing is remember these are one-time funds. So one of the things RiotPEC is very closely monitoring is how much of these federal funds are going to pay for recurring state expenditures at state level because that can lead to a structural problem if you're using these funds. So it's, it's important, it's, you know, it's better to use for capital or for things that are, you know, are one-time. So there, there might be a particular program that you want to do, but it's just time limited. And then I'm just going to close with just giving you some of these. Contact Dorothy Pascal is the head of the Pandemic Recovery Office. She's one of my former colleagues at the Office of Management and Budget. They are, you know, they're putting together a compliance. I know that Brian Dino is who we're closely with, who many of you know, has been involved in kind of organizing the cities and towns to, to trade information. And then I put my contact information. And then just one other piece, you know, when I've talked, I've talked to a few cities and towns about this. I do think, you know, the state will venture into program and they'll do things like workforce development, housing. And I think your housing could be a particular good place for a city or town to think about with these monies. But, but certainly the capital end of things in a city or town. I know generally cities and towns have pretty deep capital needs. We're, we're, we're not, Rhode Island as a whole municipalities underinvest in capital. So I do think that's an area to, to think about, just putting, it, it, it's much more, it's, it's simpler than, I think, trying to do a program of some kind, in my opinion. Now, you may have a good, you know, you may have a good, you know, some cities and towns are looking at community centers or parks or town squares or things like that. So you may have a project, but, but I do think it's a little bit harder to get into a, a, you know, particular social services program. I think that gets a little bit more difficult. It's just my, it's just my opinion. And often those don't lend themselves very well to one-time funds. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Members of the council, questions that you have for our guests? Mr. LeBlanc.
Thank you for joining us tonight. Appreciate the, the presentation. You had listed the schools receiving 7.8 million. I'm assuming they have the same date parameters to use the funds as the municipality?
I believe so, but I, I think you'd have to confirm that. So I believe that they do. And they have, you know, they, they do have some restrictions as well, but it's fairly, I mean, in general, the K-12 funding coming through the COVID legislation has been pretty wide open in terms of how they can use it.
And then your slide referenced that you could use the funds for sewers. Is that for new construction or can that be to pay off sewer debt that occurred in the past?
Gee, that's a good question. There is, there is guidance that can be consulted, consulted on this. I would be somewhat. I would be, I guess I would be cautious about paying off that because you're not actually, you know, you're not actually investing in sewer. And the whole idea of this legislation was to actually do improvements in spending. So, but there is more flexibility for, for cities and towns. And if you wanted to get to that result, I think there's probably ways to swap, you know, funding from one, from one side to another on that. So if you had capital provenance planned, you could, you could move the money around a bit there. You have, you have more flexibility in the state.
Thank you, friends. And there's one last question. Your slide referenced that we, a municipality could use the funds to reduce residential taxes. So for example, next year, if we wanted to take $2 million of the funding that we're getting to say to the taxpayers, we're going to offset, so that you have a reduction in your taxes? You're saying that we're allowed to do that?
Yes, under the law, but fiscally, it's not, to me, it's not that, it would not be that wise if you're going to have to whipsaw back at the next year because it's a one-time fund. One, one way of doing it is if, if, for example, the, if the revenue loss offset comes into your budget, but you didn't need all of that because you didn't grow 4.1%, your budget may be a little bit more flush than you expected, and you might be able to either not raise taxes or give a, give some tax relief that you could sustain year over year. So I guess I don't think, I don't think it's wise to take a one-time fund necessarily. And you, you could give a one-time rebate, but.
Understood. It goes, it goes to your other comment about adding to the base when it comes to salaries with this, using this one-time funds. It's probably not a wise decision. So totally get your, your, your stance on that one. So thank you very much for answering my questions.
Thank you. Other question, Ms. Ludwick.
Thank you for joining us tonight. So I did have a couple of questions on, I think it was the second to last slide, that you were listing kind of five recommended areas that we consider using the funds. Can you give us a few, maybe off-the-cuff examples, just so we know better how to think about a few of these? So for example, public health expenses connected with COVID. So for example, last year, the state basically dumped on us the first round of vaccine for age 75 and older. And that, that was a massive operation for our town to take. So for example, the cost associated with having to hire all the personnel and bring them in and, and the nurses and this and that. Is that possibly something that could be considered a expense that the town had to take on for that?
Absolutely. That's, that's a no-brainer in terms of permissible use. So I, I thought most cities and towns got, got reimbursed or compensated for those expenses through, you know, through state, state allocation, but I could be wrong.
So maybe that's something we can, can look into, Mr. Marshon, because that, I know that that, that was an unexpected and unbudgeted cost, so I don't, I don't know which pocket we had to reach in for that. A second part is, the next one on your list was small business assistance. Is, is there just a, just an off-the-cuff example that you can think of that, that might be just an example?
You know, the state, you, the state had programs that I think go to the cities and towns as well with modifications that were made. You could, for example, assist businesses with internet delivery. A lot of them are paying a lot of money for these third-party platforms. There's, you know, this, I think the, the state may consider, and I've been working with the Rhode Island Foundation, things like forgivable loans, which are similar to PPP loans. So you could, you know, for your local businesses that were impacted, have some type of forgivable loan program or, so there's, you know, there's a number of examples like that in, 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 you know, in other, other places. I do, you know, I think one thing that the state level is looking at is perhaps Main Street, you know, refurbishment in certain areas, the hard, you know, disadvantaged communities. So, so that, so that sort of thing.
Okay, and then a similar question on the, the last bullet, so assistance to those impacted, I believe it was. So the, the item that comes to my mind when I think about this is something like, you know, if you were laid off due to COVID, at the state level, we have unemployment benefits. What, what would be maybe a more local example that we can think of that would be assistance to someone directly impacted?
So you could do technical assistance, grants for food, you know, transportation vouchers. I know that, I know that the state has this Back to Work RI program where they're giving people supports to get back into the workforce. So, you know, I think things along those, along those lines, housing, you know, there's a massive, massive program for rental assistance that's kind of going, rolling out pretty slowly, unfortunately. But you, you know, you may want to think about, about housing as well. So, but I do think there, you know, those are, if you think about the Town of Coventry, you know, those things are hard to do, you know, you're kind of inventing things and kind of doing it, you know, at small scale, and so it takes a lot of work. If you, if you go with other cities and towns, you may be able to design some programs that you could all kind of join in at your own levels. But I, that's why I thought the social service programs are a little bit, they're a little bit more difficult. But I think, you know, if you see needs in the community, it's absolutely an appropriate way to go.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Mrs. Lima.
So let me know if I'm out of order in asking this. But so based on the presentation we saw, are we allowed to use these funds for the next items on our agenda that we were planning to discuss? Or is that restricted or out of the question? But Mr. DBAs, we were, our next item is to talk about using relief funding for a performance audit and a community survey. If you could just, if you can speak or if you have knowledge of that would be not allowed with these funds?
Yeah, I'm not going to step in Mr. Gorham's shoes since I'm not getting paid for it. But the, I think, I think those are, that, those seem to be somewhat questionable because, you know, you do have to, this isn't just a wide-open set of conditions here. I mean, when you look at what it's for, so I think if the survey was related to impact from the pandemic, I'd probably be inclined to say yes. If it's a performance audit, I want to know, you know, what, what performance is being audited. Does that have anything to do with the pandemic or the impact from the pandemic? Because if it doesn't, I, I'm not sure where that fits, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions by members of the council? Mr. DBAs, I have two questions. Number one, I, I noticed when you listed the amount of money that was coming to Coventry, 3.4 million is subject to appropriation. Now, does that mean we're going to get it or we might get it or maybe not? That's a big chunk of money.
So the General Assembly, unlike the, unlike the CARES Act funding that came through and Governor Raimondo kind of spent it unilaterally, and then the General Assembly appropriated it after the fact, which is kind of an interesting way to appropriate money after it's already been spent. So the General Assembly is, is asserting its authority to be the appropriator, which is actually their constitutional role. And they basically don't want this money spent unless it gets appropriated. So basically, they've, they have not appropriated any of the 1.1 billion that the state has coming to it or the capital funds that the state is coming to it. They've, I think they've appropriated, and this is in the budget that has not yet passed, but is going through the assembly. I think they've appropriated most, if not all, of about a billion dollars of other money that are going to state, you know, state agencies and the K-12 funding and all that's coming through the General Assembly budget. And they have appropriated roughly half, a little more than half of the municipal money in this FY22 budget. It may have to do with the tranches of money coming from the federal government and when they're coming, because I'm not sure the full amount is coming. I think it's, it's coming in two pieces. But it may be, I haven't talked to anyone there, it may be because they want to kind of dole this money out. I expect the remainder would probably be appropriated in FY23 or also could be, it could be appropriated later this year in the fall when they come back as part of the FY22 budget. They may add it, but right now, they've held in reserve a big chunk of money. But it's, it's, I mean, you're a good company because none of the state money is being appropriated for FY22 as of now.
So we shouldn't spend it before we get it?
I think you, you can plan to spend it because I don't see a scenario where you're not going to get that funding now. You never know whether they may take with one hand and, I mean, give with one hand and take with the other. You've seen that happen before, but, but I tend to think that they, they likely won't do that with this, with this funding. There was, you know, there was some cut in distressed aid as a result of some of this money coming through. So, so, but I think you should plan on, on that money coming through.
Okay, my second question is this, and I hope this is not too complex, but the Coventry Building Committee wants to ask the voters to approve a referendum for school reconstruction. And upfront, the town will have to pay money before the state reimbursement starts kicking in. So since one of the categories was to reduce the tax burden on the, on the voters, the residents, I'm wondering, can we use some of this money to help pay upfront some of the burden that we will have if the referendum passes and we do go after a bond?
I'm not sure. I know there's communities thinking of using their funding for school buildings. You know, I do think that education funding is a, is a more likely source of that money because it's, you know, it's for that purpose out there. So it's, it's something, you know, it's something to think about for sure. So I think it's, what you're saying is somewhat complicated if it's an upfront payment. But I don't have a good answer for you on that, so.
I thought I would throw it out. It's late in the evening and one never knows what response would be to any question. Any other questions that members of the council have from the city DBAs? Ms. Ludwick.
Maybe not a question, just a, a thank you for joining us, Mr. Marshon. Thank you for connecting us with Mr. DBAs. And I was curious, is this, is this, is this from Representative Nardone, the connection here?
I believe so. I believe so. I met with Mr., I met with Representative Nardone about this generally, so I, I believe that was how the connection came through.
Okay, great. Oh, perfect. Thank you very much to Rep. Nardone. I don't think he's on with us, but we'll, we'll pass along the thank you.
And I'm happy to answer questions. As I said, I've given you some other good sources, but I'm happy to run down things as well. It's something that we very much are interested in, in doing. And please look for our municipal finance reports.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your patience in waiting. I know it's 9:27 and the public agenda was supposed to start at seven. We're a little bit late and we had much important business to discuss. So thank you for your patience and it was very informative for us.
Thank you for the opportunity. Take care and good luck.
Good evening. We're now moving to agenda item F3, Discussion, Action, Use of COVID and Wind Energy Development Settlement Funds. Mr. Marshon, I'd like to ask you to talk about whether or not we have to commit funds before the end of this fiscal year. If we don't commit funds, what does it mean about the, the money that has come to the town?
So we don't have to commit the funds this fiscal year, but at the end of this fiscal year, because we had it as revenue, next year, it will go into the general fund, fund balance. And it will just increase the, the town's general fund reserves and the town council could appropriate. And the town council could appropriate it at any time through a special resolution.
But it sounds like three point four million has not actually come to us yet. Is that?
Wait, please, um, I thought you had asked me about the wed funds, not the COVID funds.
The COVID funds first.
Yeah, the COVID funds are separate because of their designation and restrictions. Those will be encumbered as COVID funds whenever we receive them, because there are specific rules governing how we can spend them.
Right, but since we haven't received them before June thirtieth, uh, we don't necessarily have to, um, say what we're gonna use them for, so therefore they would not go back into the general fund in twenty twenty-two budget. Is that correct?
Yes. That, that, we will recognize the COVID funds at the time we receive them. And so since we have not received them and we don't anticipate receiving them in this fiscal year, it'll just be part of the next fiscal year anyway.
Okay, and what restrictions, if any, are there on the use of the wed funds?
None.
Okay, fine. Okay, um, discussion of COVID and wind energy development settlement funds. Uh, we're open to, um, a motion by any member of the council concerning, um, anything they have in mind about the use of either funds. Ms. Ludwig?
So, um, maybe we can just lay the groundwork here, because these are two large chunks of money that we need to discuss. Are we looking to discuss every avenue tonight? Are we looking to just throw ideas out, or how do we kind of contain this?
Right now, there are two agenda items here, performance, operational audit and community service. So they, uh, a community survey, so they are listed, so the council can take action tonight on one or both of these items. Uh, but since other uses of the funds are not exactly listed, uh, we should not be, uh, taking a vote. We certainly can discuss use of funds, but we would not be able to take a vote other than on those two items which are there. And the council has the option of whether they want to take a vote on those two items there or delay, um, the vote to another time.
Okay, so can I make, um, I'll make a general statement then about, um, uh, I'll make a general statement and then I'll, I'll make it in response specifically to A and B then here on the agenda. So firstly, um, the wind energy development settlement funds that we keep calling the wed funds, um, they resulted out of the settlement, uh, from late last year. Um, so we have approximately eight hundred thousand dollars there. Just from a general priority perspective, I think those funds should be used for services that are related to the turbines. And what I mean by that is, uh, I would like to see some sort of expenditures that we can, uh, list out at some point, and maybe not tonight, because it's not on specifically on the agenda, but, um, something that has to do with a review of the flicker, the independent flicker monitoring, as an example, and then some other actions that are related to the turbines themselves. However, um, because that amount of money is approximately eight hundred thousand dollars, I think there is an opportunity for these two, um, items to fit under that wed settlement title as well. So for example, the performance operational audit is something that I've heard, for a long time, and specifically in the last year, um, from residents, not only in my district, but in other locations as well. Um, I believe there's some information that Mr. Marshant might be able to give us in terms of approximate costs, um, and how we might do something like this. I'd be interested in understanding that before we take a vote on exactly how much that would be. And then on the community survey, it was my understanding that something like this would benefit all residents for relatively small amount of money, uh, that we could possibly partner with a, a local organization or, or college or university, so something in the ten to fifteen thousand dollar range. So if Mr. Marshant would be able to give us some of that background, I would appreciate that.
Mr. Marshon, do you have any, um, information? Uh, let's take the community survey. Um, have you been able to receive any bids on a community survey and what would be the approximate cost?
I received a quote from a national organization that conducts the, uh, National Community Survey across the country. It's a national standard. Uh, their quote was for nineteen thousand dollars to perform all aspects of the survey and statistical analysis. And, and that is the only proposal that I have sought so far, uh, as a starting point. I have not reached out and I do not have any current relationships with any of the local university faculty, and I'm not familiar with, um, kind of, whether there's anyone or a program presently active in this area that would do community survey. Um, I was able to do that in the past, uh, through, uh, over time, I, I found relationships and we nurtured a program, uh, and, and put it in place and we pulled it off with some success. But, um, here I'd be starting from scratch, uh, more or less cold calling a few people. And the university types, they're very friendly, so I'm sure we could get something going. But I don't have any, uh, anything at this time.
Okay, so we have not actually put together a request for proposal, is that correct?
Correct. Uh, the, this is a professional service and, um, so, you know, the, the proposal I received is adequate and sufficient. However, if you would like to explore the option of, uh, local services available through, uh, local colleges and universities, I can explore that. But that will take more time to develop.
Um, I'm, I'm more interested in what the survey would include. I mean, um, what is the format that, that would be used? Um, how many people would be surveyed, um, et cetera? I mean, are we talking about every single resident getting a survey, or ten thousand people, or five thousand? Um, the distribution by age groups at household, uh, districts, et cetera? So that kind of information would be valuable in making a decision.
Well, the, the standard survey models uses a, a simple random sample of about three hundred to four hundred respondents. And that can be done either by mail-in or telephone. And, um, because of the day and age we live, they all offer supplemental, uh, surveys that aren't included in the statistical analysis that are available through, uh, online, uh, forums, Survey Monkey and other, other avenues where people may also participate in the survey, but they won't be included in the statistical results in order to protect the integrity of the data.
Okay, uh, other comments by members of the council about the community survey? Mr. LeBlanc, any comments? Yes?
Well, I think the community survey, uh, needs to happen. Uh, but when it comes to using the wed funds, um, I actually sent an email to Mr. Marshant, uh, specifically stating that I, I believe those funds should only benefit the, uh, residents of District One. Uh, I threw up multiple suggestions, but two of the most important ones were truly independent, uh, monitoring of flicker and noise, if we can use the money towards that. Um, or, um, benefit any and all residents where the turbines impact their daily lives and their health. Um, but I, I don't think that we should be using these funds for either the performance audit or the community survey.
Okay, thank you. And we know that based on the, um, based on the presentation we just heard, that we cannot use COVID funds for a community survey. So we would have to find it somewhere in our budget. Is that correct, Mr. Marshon?
Uh, yes, that is correct. However, I understand that right now we're working with a little bit of a budget surplus. And, um, so we, we do, we may have, I believe we do have funds available if you wish to appropriate, appropriate it from the budget surplus of this year. That would not include the, the settlement funds from the wind energy development.
Okay, good information. Mrs. Lima, do you have a comment?
Um, I just wanted to echo the sentiments of Mr. LeBlanc regarding the wed funds. And then also, as we've already discussed, uh, from the previous item, it sounds like COVID funds would not be appropriate or allowed for these two items. But I just wanted to say for the record that I am in favor of pursuing these and moving them forward. Um, but it sounds like we are not able to vote tonight on exactly how they'll be funded or moving them forward. So I just wanted to clarify if we're just keeping this at discussion at this point, or?
We can keep, we can keep it at a discussion, but the item is listed for consent agenda and our discussion and our action. Therefore, if there's a member of the council who would like to put forth a motion, we can entertain that motion this evening. If no member of the council wants to put in a specific motion for either of these items, uh, then we can just bring this up in another discussion. I fully expect that we will be discussing the use of these funds over the course of probably a few ma, a few meetings.
Okay, yeah, then in that case, I just wanted to make it known that I don't think we're in a place to vote on this tonight. And, um, I think we need to collect a little bit more information about the costs and the quotes we get for each, and then also, um, some clarity on the appropriate, um, uh, funds and where they were.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Marshon, could you give us sort of a ballpark figure for our estimate for a performance audit? So we can keep that in mind?
Yeah, we received a proposal from our auditing firm, uh, for nineteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, I heard that. I'm just, I don't think we, did we get a quote ready for the performance audit?
Yes, that was also nineteen thousand. They both came out to close to the same.
Okay, we, we thought we just heard, we misunderstood you. So both nineteen, nineteen thousand for both, okay? Yes, I'm sorry, each, yes. All right.
Well, um, so, I mean, the other thing that comes into mind too is, I mean, it sounds like all members of the council are in favor of these two items. We just don't believe that the, or I'm not speaking for everybody, but the wed funds or COVID should be used to, to fund these. Um, I don't know how quickly the rest of the members of the council want to get these moving. Um, I know that the, the, uh, public pressure for the audit specifically has been high, especially after the budget. So, um, I know that we want to move that forward and I'm not sure if there's the ability or the desire of the council to at least get those moving. But I know, I don't know that we can, because we're, we're not stating the specific amounts or, um, the use of, or which funds or where the funds would come from, but, um, just talking out loud.
Okay, thank you. Well, we know that the, there's a sentiment to not use wed funds for the performance audit or a community survey. We know that we cannot use COVID funds for either one. But Mr. Marshon said that there is, uh, some surplus that we might be able to use the money from the surplus in order to fund both of these activities. However, for a performance audit, we said that we wanted to include both the school and the town, and we have not engaged any discussion with the school about whether they want to participate, um, what kind of interests that they have, what their goals would be for a performance audit. So for a performance audit, it seems appropriate that we engage in a discussion with the school administration and the school committee to determine just what they would see as a goal for a performance audit before we commit to, to doing an audit for them, so to speak, uh, because they need to commit the resources and the time and energy to provide information to anyone who's doing, uh, an audit.
I apologize. I thought they'd already been consulted and that was why this was on the agenda. So I didn't realize that that conversation hadn't taken place.
Uh, they were, they were told that we were going to discuss it, uh, but they were also told, um, in, I think, leadership meetings that they would be consulted to, to talk about what would their interests be? And we, we absolutely need to understand what their resources are available. So if we decided to do an audit and the person who's conducting it wants to have, I'll say ten hours of time of the leadership and they're not available, then we're gonna run into problems. So there has to be a commitment about the resources that are gonna be available and the goals of each. Um, any other comments? It seems like we're leaning toward not making a decision this evening, but leaning toward getting more information from Mr. Marshon concerning, uh, more details about a community survey and also a performance audit and to see if there are any other vendors who might be able to provide us with information. Is that the direction in which we seem to be leading?
Yes. Yes.
I heard yes from this Ludwig, Mr. LeBlanc, Mrs. Lima? Okay, and that's a good decision too, because Mrs. Shockley is not here. Um, and it would be good for her to participate in some of these discussions. All right, so Mr. Marshon, uh, we do need more information and hopefully we'll be able to put this back on the agenda in the July meeting. Does that seem doable to be able to gather information for us by that meeting?
Yes, and I will encumber the funds based on the quotes that we have now, so that we have those, we can carry those funds that we have surplus today into next month. And then we can appropriate them as the council sees fit.
Excellent.
I think.
Does that make a point to everyone, Ms. Ludwig?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to comment. I, I think when it comes to the performance audit, that, we've had so many conversations on that. It would be helpful to understand what, what is actually gonna happen. So for example, what's the goal of the audit? Just to find staff inefficiencies? Or if we could, if we could, um, share some of the information about not just what the cost covers, but, um, some of the general goals or just information that they've given us as a part of that bid? Or it may not even be a bid. If we, I, I thought, um, I thought I remember that, um, our, uh, annual auditor also has some type of, um, performance or audit abilities we can tap into. So that, I don't know if that requires a formal bid process.
It, it does not. I, I provided a copy of their proposal a couple of weeks ago by email, and this is from our auditor. And, uh, they put this proposal together under the scope of services that we retained them by. And so, uh, I'd be happy to have them attend the next meeting and make a presentation and answer your questions about what the performance assessment actually entails. Uh, but it's, you know, it's more, a- again, a performance assessment is gonna be looking at the policies and procedures, uh, workloads, work assignments, and methodologies for how an organization is administratively handling its tasks and finances. And so it, there's a lot of soft stuff in there where they will be interviewing staff and management, uh, to get an understanding of where there may be opportunities for efficiencies. And then they would make recommendations at the end.
And I think one thing that would be helpful is to just, um, if we can just differentiate what those goals are versus, say, a forensic audit or things like that, because I, I have a feeling that we, um, we can't make every person happy. Uh, you know, for people that are coming up as, asking for, you know, audit information or forensic audit or this type of audit or that type of audit, but just being able to make clear what the goals of that are, I think to the public would be very helpful. So whether that's bringing them in or making that document.
And when we, when we spoke with the auditors, uh, we talked about the, the nomenclature and how, uh, some words come with a supercharged expectation of finding wrongdoing. When you say forensic audit, people immediately think crime and criminal. And that's not what the purpose of this is. It really is a performance assessment to learn what are the work practices, um, in each of the organizations that can be fine tuned to achieve, uh, better performance. And, um, it certainly could uncover, um, errors, omissions, misdeeds and whatever. But the, the objective is very professional to understand the process and make recommendations on how to improve it and find, uh, a better alignment of resources, whether it's staffing or protocols and that sort of thing. So, um, uh, whether you call it an audit, an assessment, a forensic or a performance, some of these words just may have, uh, a slightly different meaning. If someone was gonna perform a forensic audit on your place of business, it would probably raise the level of stress quite a bit more than a performance assessment. And we're not in, we're not about trying to create a stressful environment, uh, for our public employees. We're, we're trying to help and improve the operations that we have, uh, to do a better job in the future.
Okay, so thank you for reiterating, um, Ms. Ludwig, the need for establishing goals. And I also think that, um, not only will the auditor or performance audit firm that we select, help us establish goals, but it behooves us as a town and as a school committee to establish the goals that they're interested in too. So there needs to be some partnership between, um, the vendor and for the people who are asking for this audit. So, uh, point well taken, and we will continue that discussion um, in July. And Mr. Marshawn, when you invite, uh, this gentleman or a woman to come in to talk about an audit, um, please include on that invitation, the superintendent and the school committee chair, so that they can, um, be, um, under tiles with us and be able to ask questions themselves. Okay?
Would you like this to be a joint meeting with the school committee?
Uh, it can be.
Special meeting?
Uh, I'm not sure we have time for a special meeting, but we could have a joint meeting for that portion of the agenda. That would be appropriate. We, what we can, what we can do is maybe you can contact the superintendent and the school committee chair and ask what their, what their desire is, whether to just have the two of them meet with us or else have the whole school committee as part of it. I think that's their decision. Okay. Good. Okay, um, F four, uh, it is 10 minutes before 10 o'clock. Um, I believe we need a motion to continue beyond 10, or we can just say that, um, we don't have time for some of these items. What's the council's, uh, feeling about continuing on with this agenda? We do have to have, um, a decision, um, because we're sitting as a local liquor board this evening. And we also have several agenda items. Mr. La, Mr. LeBlanc?
Um, I would like to at least discuss F six and G one, but if we could, uh, table the other items, I would appreciate it. That's just my.
Okay, uh, F seven is.
I'll second it.
We also have F four. Are you saying you want to table F four also?
Yes.
So, so F?
It would be F, uh, uh, actually, I'll just make a motion. Uh, uh, I make a motion to table F four, F five, F seven, and continue on with F six and G one.
Okay, F seven, I believe was already tabled earlier in the evening. So, uh, we have a motion on the floor to table agenda items F four, F five, and, um, okay, seven was already tabled. All right.
President Dixon, um, actually, can I ask one question before I second it?
Certainly.
Mr. Marshawn, do you need a decision tonight on the fleet management to proceed? Are we going to be stuck for a few weeks?
Uh, we can't proceed without the approval of this agreement. So, uh, we postpone starting this agreement until, uh, the next meeting.
And we are considering having a, another meeting. I think it's, um, June, it's a July 12th to 13th. I think it was July.
Yeah, they, I believe Mr. Wazika had proposed setting up a meeting for July 12th.
Okay, so if we move the fleet, um, management program to July 12th, uh, does that delay us too much?
No, I mean, the, the, the ordering vehicles under the program is already delayed due to chip shortages and other issues. Um, the sooner we get started, the sooner we make progress, but I don't think a couple of weeks will have a huge impact. Uh, we had been trying to get ahead of the new model year, uh, which starts in July. So I think, again, a couple of weeks aren't going to make a big difference. Uh, I do also want to call to your attention that the, um, item F five uh, was what we were holding a subsequent, um, executive session for, and I'm going to notify Mr. Dimitri that we've tabled it to the 12th.
Thank you very much. Would you give us?
I'll second, I'll second the motion then, President Dixon.
Okay, uh, please convey to Mr. Dimitri our apologies for holding him and, uh, tell him that when we take up this item again, it'll be the first thing on our agenda. And our, our goal will be July 12th. Thank you. All right, we have a motion made. We have a second by Ms. Ludwick. All in favor of tabling F four and F five, please raise your hand. For yeas, no nays, the motion passes. Okay, we're now on to, um, F six. Do I have a motion for F six? Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please read the agenda item?
Discussion and interaction tax appeal of Mr. Donald Nestor for tax freeze.
Okay. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Um, I'd like to make a motion to dispose this. I'd like to make a motion to dispose the settlement to Mr. Nestor of three thousand four hundred and nine dollars and ninety-two cents and any accrued interest.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Hillary Lima?
Yes.
Jennifer Longway?
Yes.
Amy LeBlanc?
Yes.
Ian Dixon?
No. The motion passes three to one. Thank you very much. We're now at item G one, uh, the, uh, liquor, uh, sitting as a local liquor board. Mr. Doug Estino, thank you for your patience in waiting so long. Uh, could you please explain your role here with us this evening?
Absolutely, uh, um, Madam Council President and Counselors. So, um, this evening, this particular matter is, um, where the, uh, the town council is sitting as a local licensing board. And in particular, it's, uh, your role this evening is to, um, hear the evidence that I will be presenting through the, uh, Coventry Police Officers who are present on this call, um, and, uh, present this evening. And, and this has to do with a violation of, um, closing hours under, uh, Coventry Code, section one fifty-three dash two, which specifies the hours of operation for, uh, businesses that are licensed, uh, as, as liquor establishments and, uh, victualing houses. My role here this evening is to, uh, assist in the presentation of the evidence, um, to support the alleged violation. And once we present the evidence to the council, um, it's going to be your role or your job to, um, consider the evidence. And, um, we will be making a recommendation. Uh, you can take up that recommendation. You can modify the recommendation. Um, you can, uh, find that, that, uh, we have made our case in the um, alleged license violation, or you can determine that we have not made our case, and you can dismiss the alleged, uh, license violation. You have those options. And, uh, Mr. Gorham, as the town solicitor, will assist you in your deliberations. So my role this evening really is more of a prosecuting, um, uh, attorney, uh, to present the case to you. And obviously, we're presenting the enforcement action. And, um, if, uh, if I may, I'd like to just roll right into that, uh, unless, uh, the council has any questions.
Oh, please, please proceed.
Okay, so, um, we, uh, are going to be presenting, uh, when I say we, myself and, uh, some officers that are on the call are going to be presenting evidence of a business hour violation by, uh, JW's Pub located at four thirty-three Washington Street in Coventry. And, uh, in particular, we're going to be introducing evidence, uh, of an event, uh, that occurred, an incident that occurred on May fifteenth of this year, uh, where, um, uh, in responding to a noise complaint, um, members of the, uh, Coventry Police Department, uh, noticed, uh, that, uh, there was a, uh, a gathering um, of, uh, patrons at the, uh, JW's Pub after the business, uh, uh, hour limitation. May I ask, um, uh, just for, uh, the Coventry officer or officers who are on the call to just identify themselves, uh, for the, uh, for the council and myself?
Yes, sir, this is Officer Barthium.
Thank you, Officer Barthium. Um, uh, just as a preliminary matter, I, I want to make.
I'm sorry, sir, that, my name's Officer Barthium. We also have our, um, Acting Sergeant Casey here as well, sir.
Oh, okay, thank you very much. Um, uh, what I will do is, um, I'm just going to give the council a little bit of background on the material that is in front of it. And, uh, and then I will, uh, uh, ask you some questions about the incident, um, that brought us here this evening. So the council, uh, should have received, uh, this afternoon, a packet of material. I'd like to just, uh, for the record, uh, review what those, what that material consists of. It consists of a three-page letter, um, from Chief Heiss, the Coventry Police Department to Jason Wu. It is, the letter is dated May twentieth, um, and it outlines the, uh, the events which, uh, brought us here. There is also a two-page incident report followed by a copy of chapter one fifty-three, the applicable licenses that are, uh, in, in front of you this evening, as well as, um, some call log information. The call log information, uh, just demonstrates that, uh, Mr. Wu has received notice of this evening's hearing by personal service by the Coventry Police Department. Um, and, uh, I don't, I can't see if Mr. Wu is, is here this evening. He obviously, uh, has the right to, uh, to be here, and he has the right to present his case either directly or through counsel, as well as the right to present witnesses. So, um, without further ado.
Mr. Doug Estino, um, Mr. Wu, I believe Mr. Wu is, uh, listed on the attendee list.
Okay, um, well, the process is that, uh, we get to go first, and then, um, as the, uh, as the chair, you can, uh, ask Mr. Wu to provide any input or commentary on our presentation. And then you can take the matter of our recommendation under, under advisement.
Go, let's go.
Is there someone speaking? Continue, Mr. Doug Estino.
Sure, sure. So, um, we're going to be, uh, I just want to lay out, um, the, uh, for the alleged violation, we're going to be recommending a, uh, a fine of five hundred dollars, and that is based on, um, Coventry Code Section. Uh, it's Article One, Section One dash two, Section A. And, um, what that section reads is that, um, for a first offense, a fine of not less than one dollar, not more than five hundred dollars may be imposed if, uh, you find that we meet our burden this evening. So, uh, without any further ado, um, I'd like to, uh, uh, ask Officer Barthium to, um, please tell us, uh, what happened on the evening of May fifteenth of this year relative to JW's, uh, Pub.
Sir, um, I know that you just referenced that, uh, my incident report was in the, uh, in the packet. Would it, uh, be appropriate if I just read the narrative of that report?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
On May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, at approximately one forty AM, Acting Sergeant Casey and I responded to JW's Pub for a loud noise complaint which had been reported by a resident who lives across the street. Upon arrival, I observed approximately ten vehicles in the parking lot and several patrons gathered outside of the, of the bar exit door. I told the crowd to keep the noise down and be on their way. I then made contact with the bar owner, Jason Wu, who was inside. As I opened the unlocked entrance door, I could see him begin to escort patrons towards the exit door and heard him instructing the patrons to leave if you're not an employee here. Approximately five to six more people then left the inside of the bar area to the parking lot. I, I advised Wu of the time and instructed him to disperse the crowd. Wu request, requested the remaining patrons who were gathered outside to leave, and he then returned inside the bar. Acting Sergeant Casey arrived on scene at this time. I approached Acting Sergeant Casey as he arrived to the parking lot area and conferred with him. As we were speaking outside of the bar, through the glass windows, we could observe Wu and his employees drinking shots of what, I'm sorry, one thing I neglected to write is what I believed to be alcohol beverages at the bar. We then knocked on the door and Wu came outside to speak with us. Wu was reminded of the town ordinance to have all patrons out of the bar by one twenty AM. And I referenced the ordinance here, closing hours for shops, victualizing house, tavern, bars, saloons and other places of, of resort. Wu responded that he, he tried to tell his patrons to leave, but they did not listen to him. He was informed that one fifty AM was unacceptable and that this warning would be documented.
Okay, thank you, Officer Barthium. And, uh, may I, may I just have you confirm, how many, uh, patrons did you, uh, witness inside, uh, JW's Pub after one twenty i- in the morning of, uh, uh, May fifteenth?
So according to my report, um, which was done that night, approximately five to six people exited as they saw me attempting to enter.
Okay, and, uh, given the time and the fact that it was beyond one twenty AM, uh, that, uh, constitutes in, in your mind, uh, a violation of the town's, uh, closing time ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, do you have anything to add, uh, to your, uh, presentation this evening?
I do not.
Okay, how about Acting Sergeant Casey? Uh, because I know, uh, Sergeant, Acting Sergeant Casey is on the call. Anything to add?
I do not, sir.
Okay, um, thank you. So based on, uh, uh, the, uh, Coventry Police Department report, uh, as well as, um, the, the, uh, um, uh, chapter one fifty-three, uh, which requires that anyone operating a victualing house tavern, um, uh, that, uh, those, um, that those premises, uh, all patrons shall leave the licensed premises not later than one twenty. You've heard the testimony from, uh, Officer Barthium and, uh, Acting Sergeant Casey, as well as had an opportunity to view the report. And based on, uh, that, uh, evidence, um, and the observations of the Coventry Police Officers, we're recommending that the council impose a five hundred dollar fine, uh, if you find a violation here. I think at this point in time, it's appropriate to, uh, turn the proceeding over to, uh, Mr. Wu as the licensee and his representatives.
Okay, Mr. Wu, um, we would ask you to, um, make comments at this time.
Uh, yeah, that was the first night at a hundred percent, and we were really short-staffed. So it was kind of hard to push everybody out, but we did our best to push, uh, I mean, there's still five stragglers that wouldn't leave, so. It was the first night a hundred percent, and we've been kind of suffering from this COVID thing. And we're short-staffed still to this day.
Mr. Wu, do you have any counsel with you or anyone else that you would like to, uh, speak on your behalf?
Uh, no, I don't have a counsel, it's just me.
Okay, thank you. Uh, but, Mr. Doug Estino, I just want to ask again for the reference for the ordinance for the closing time. What is it?
Uh, it is chapter one fifty-three.
One fifty-three?
One fifty-three dash two.
Yes.
And it sets forth the closing times, uh, closing hours for shops, victualing house, tavern, bar, saloons and other places of resort. And, uh, reading from Section A, uh, of the ordinance, it says all patrons shall leave the licensed premises not later than one twenty AM, where the licensee is permitted to open, remain open until one AM. Uh, last call is to be at twelve forty-five, uh, AM.
Okay, members of the council, you have any questions for Mr. Wu who is attending this evening? Mr. LeBlanc?
So, thank you for joining us tonight. Um, do you have any prior violations in the past two years?
Uh, no, not the last two years.
Okay, that's all I have, uh, for questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other question, Ms. Ludwick?
I'd like to know, uh, Mr. Wu, do you dispute any of the, uh, I don't know if it's called testimony narrative that was provided by the officer?
No, you was right. There was still people were trying to get up. Like I said, we're, we had three people on the floor on a busy Friday night. We try and get everybody out, but it's tough. People are buzzed, they don't want to listen. We tried our best with three people on the floor.
President Dixon, may, may I also ask a question to Mr. Doug Estino?
Yeah.
Yes.
Can you please just reconfirm? I think at the beginning you, you said, um, you're recommending the, the five hundred dollar fine, uh, but that was within what parameters? I think you mentioned a range.
Um, so i- in reading from the, um, ordinance section, uh, where, where it refers to penalties and enforcement, um, it, it says for violation of these ordinances, a fine not less than one dollar nor more than five hundred dollars. And, and that is from Article One, Section. And that is from Article 1, Section 1-2, Subpart A.
I have one further question for Mr. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Wu, have you taken any steps? Or what will you do differently now that you've received the violation if we opt not to impact your license?
Well, we call last call at 12:30. And then we try and get everybody out by 1:15. That's what we've been doing since we got that violation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions by members of the council? All right, I will, Mrs. Lima?
I just wanted to ask the prosecution why they decided to go to recommend the maximum fine in this case?
Just, it, I mean, you have the right to, you have the right as the licensing authority, you are the final arbiter on this. I think it says not more than, not less than $1, not more than $500 for the first offense. So I just felt that a $500 fine is warranted. I, for what it's worth, I did have a conversation earlier today with Chief Heiss, and I don't want to, he's certainly capable of speaking for himself. We discussed the appropriateness of this recommendation. I shared with him I would be making that recommendation to the council this evening, and we just think that's appropriate. You have the right to modify our recommendation, you know, as you see fit.
If I could?
Yeah, Chief Heiss?
When I was looking at the ordinance, it was under 89-12 violations of penalties. It was saying minimum penalties. No penalty imposed hereunder shall be less than, for a first offense, mandatory minimum $5 of $500. I'm not sure which one you're talking about, the dollar to $500. That's why, that's what I had looked at.
Sure, so the, under the general, under the general code section, that's what I was recommending. Obviously, the, what you've indicated is not less than $500 from Section 89-12. Either is appropriate, that's where the $500 comes from.
I hadn't heard of the dollar for whatever, so I'm fine with whatever is decided, but I just was referencing the minimum penalties.
Yeah, and as I, as I shared with the council in writing prior to the meeting, I mean, as the licensing authority, you have the right to revoke, suspend, or otherwise take action against the license for JW's pub. And, you know, we, our recommendation is in line with the minimum penalty, and it isn't, I don't think this rises to an imminent threat of public safety. But, you know, there is a penalty for having patrons at your, at your victualing house after the closing time.
Okay, are there any other questions that members of the council would like to ask? All right, I would like a motion by Mr. Ludwick.
Chief Heiss, would your recommendation, would it have been different had you known that it could be less than $500?
Given the times right now, with COVID and everything else, having all the business trying to recover, $500 is a hefty hit on business, I think. I'm fine with going less if it's possible.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I would like a motion by a member of the town council sitting as the liquor board of the disposition of the violation by J.W.'s Pub, 433 Washington Street, regarding the closing time ordinance, Chapter 153-2A. So I'm ready to accept a motion by?
President Dixon, I'll make a motion. It is disturbing to me that after the officers arrived, that there was still people leaving. It's clear that the ordinance was gone against. However, I do, I do think that $500 right now is admittedly a hit on our businesses. It sounds like Mr. Wu has taken steps to remedy this, and as a first offense, I'd like to make a motion to meet in the middle at $250.
So the motion by the town council sitting at the liquor board is to fine J.W.'s Pub, 433 Washington Street, to fine $250 by Ms. Ludwick. May I have a second? All right, I will second that motion to get it on the board for discussion. Any discussion?
I just like to comment that I agree with what Ms. Ludwick started with. You know, this is a very difficult time right now. I feel like the state's changing laws on what businesses need to do almost weekly. Mr. Wu did state that this was the first night, that it was 100%. So, and I know that there's a shorting staffing, shorting staffing, staff problem. So I do not agree with the $250, but it's just.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, the motion is to fine J.W.'s Pub, 433 Washington Street, $250 for violating the closing time ordinance, Chapter 153-2A. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Hillary Lima?
No.
Jennifer Ludwig?
Yes.
Jamie LaBlanc?
No.
Ann Dixon?
Yes. The motion fails two to two, two yays, two nays, so the motion fails. Are there any other motions that a member of the council would like to put forth? All right. Do I see any hands? All right, the motion fails, there will be no fine assessed to J.W.'s Pub. Thank you, Mr. Wu.
Thank you.
And thank you to all the officers and your testimony this evening. Thank you, Mr. D'Agostino, for explaining what we have to do as a liquor board. We appreciate it, it's our first time doing it. We appreciate the thoroughness of preparing all of the information for us ahead of time and having us ready. And thank you, Chief Heiss, for your cooperation this evening.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, we're now on agenda, Item H, Public Comment. We still have 19 people attending, and we have three hands up. May we bring, we have five members, five hands up. Mr. Cody, Mr. Horton, could you please bring in each person? Mr. Layden first?
Mr. Layden, you are in the meeting.
Mr. Layden, please state your name and address. Mr. Layden, you are on mute. I think you're on mute, so we can't hear you. Okay, Mr. Horton, please bring in Bill.
Hello?
Hello, Bill, would you please state your full name and address?
My name is William Tweedy. I live at 426 Washington Street, directly across the street from JW's Pub.
Thank you.
My comment is, this is not JW's first offense. JW has been fined by your town council numerous occasions and $500 fined several times. Also, JW has had the police called on his establishment hundreds of times. Matter of fact, I have home security video of violations up until 3 a.m. at his place, where they were hiding the cars and behind the residence when the Coventry Police showed up. They were hiding behind the establishment and still drinking inside. I have all security footage saved. All of my neighbors around here are tired of JW's. The town council allows them to have entertainment six nights a week. There's no other establishment in the state of Rhode Island that does karaoke six nights per week until 12:30 a.m. I live an air-conditioned lifestyle. I cannot have windows open in my home because of JW's, the patrons yelling and screaming, arguing constantly all night. Every other night, I'm on the phone with the Coventry Police. Every other night. Nothing gets done in this town, nothing. And now you give him a no fine, you slap his hand, you allow him to continue his bad behavior. COVID or no COVID, tough times or not for small business, you have to be a good neighbor. For the first year he opened, he was a good neighbor, he was a restaurant. After that, the town council gave him a specific entertainment license to allow him to have karaoke six nights per week until 12:30 a.m. No other establishment in Coventry has that. Why did he get special treatment? Why do we have to, as neighbors, have to deal with this kind of behavior? Mr. LeBlanc serves our area. Mr. LeBlanc, please do your homework. Check out the past behaviors of J.W.'s Pub. Check out their past penalties. Check out their past police reports, police calls. Hundreds of police calls on J.W.'s, hundreds. And I have dozens of videos to prove it, if anybody would like to see them.
Thank you, Mr. Tweedy. The agenda item was for us to look at the violation of the ordinance concerning hours of operation.
That is correct.
Yes, and I do understand that there have been other violations at that place, but we were restricted to consider what was before us, and that was one violation that the police put before us. But I do understand your concern. Thank you for calling in.
Ann?
Yes?
Why was I, why did nobody recognize my hand up during the whole thing going on with J.W.'s? Why am I an afterthought now? Why couldn't I throw my two cents in while this was going on? I've been waiting for over three hours to get my say for this J.W. thing. I raised my hand long before that was over. Nobody acknowledged any hands raised during that. You made your decision, and then you came to the hands. I am outraged by that.
Thank you. I did not see a hand raised under attendees, so I apologize for not recognizing you sooner.
Okay, Ann, I have written to you, you've written back to me about J.W.'s past behaviors. You're not in the silence on this one, you know their past behaviors, and they have had numerous violations since that date back in May. And that's all on police record.
Then, then the chief can submit other violations to us and bring it to the council's attention. We just had one violation before us this evening.
President Dixon, can I just make a comment?
Yes, Mr. LeBlanc.
I'm pretty sure I asked if he had received any violations the last two years, and the answer was no, and nobody, that was an incorrect comment, so I'm just a little confused. But I just want to make that comment for the record.
There is public record. I don't know if it's in the last two years, or it might even be three years. JW is receiving several offenses by the Coventry Town Council. It's all public record, if you look.
That's why I asked the question, but I just wanted.
Chief Heiss, do you have other violations on record for J.W.'s?
As far as liquor board violations, there's not, hasn't been any within two years, so this should be considered a first offense.
So what would come before the liquor board, then? There are other violations, but this is the only one before the liquor board, is that correct?
That was the one that was brought before the liquor board. There'd be anything that's listed in that letter, any violation of those situations? At the hours, instructing police, things like that.
If I could ask a question, President Dixon?
Yes, of course.
Chief Heiss, you just said hours violation, but isn't that what tonight is? Isn't it an hours violation? So I guess I'm confused. If you had other hours violations, why it didn't come in front of the liquor board in the last two years?
So I'd have to review each call to see what it was, if the people were just leaving, or if they were there at the time, or.
Okay.
This one was brought to my attention, and we addressed it.
Understood, thank you, I appreciate the clarification. But I did ask the question as to violations the last two years, and the answer was no.
Well, the thing was, if, before the town council, the liquor board, that's.
I just, if there's more hours disputes like this, it should, I feel like the liquor board should hear them more often, if that's the case, just so we have a true understanding of the violators and the non-violators.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Mr. Nakawitz, could you bring in Mr. Nakawitz, please? Mr. Nakawitz, please state your full name and your address.
Mike. Hold on a second. Hold on. Do you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, long meeting. I happen to confer and agree with Bill that it seems ridiculous that I've sat here since 6:30, 7 o'clock. There are many things that are important to the town, but when you work or you have other things that you have to do, I'm not a town council member. I find it rather ridiculous that I've sat here for so long. But we'll put that aside and hope as time goes on, you can make some adjustments to your schedule so that people in the public can make comments that you might use within the meeting as you go forward. I ask that you consider that for sure. I have three or four points that I'd like to make with you. As you know, I am the Lake Tyke representative, and I'm involved with a lot of things on the lake. And I want to bring to your attention that although the gate has been repaired and that people are not in there so much at night, I'm not sure how long that will last, that gate seems to be breakable. Well, yesterday, or today, sorry, there was a group of people on the beach. My daughter walked over there with my grandchild and left right away, wouldn't go over to the swings because everybody was drinking and smoking on the beach. It was rather kind of like rude behavior. Yesterday, there were jet skis pulling up on the beach and taking people out. Now, there are people swimming over there. Those jet skis come in pretty quickly. I would think the town would be very worried about that possible occurrence of a swimmer getting hurt. So those are the two main things. I am very interested in sewers on this side of the lake, actually anywhere where it's environmentally sensitive. And I listened to Ed tonight, and I'm worried that it's just more stop and go, and no real action towards finding a solution for some antiquated septic systems that get on, that are on the lake. And you can't, and you can't ask people who have a building that might be worth $125,000 to spend $50,000 to put a sewer line in. It is a ridiculous statement. And last thing is, I saw on the agenda about the information on the gatehouse. Being the gatekeeper, I was kind of concerned and wondered what it was about. And I noticed that you canceled that part of the meeting, and I'm gonna have to be back here for the July meeting. I may be away in July for a couple of weeks. Probably, there's a likelihood it will occur during my vacation. However, that's on me. Maybe I need to make sure I take information with me so I can address those things while I'm away. So I opened that up for discussion with all of you guys. And I do appreciate all the effort you put in. I know you put in a lot of effort, and you do a good job. However, I do have these things that. I know you put in a lot of effort and you do a good job. However, I do have these things that I'm very concerned about.
Thank you. We do have the agenda item about Tyke Gatehouse and Pipes that we already said that it will be on a July 12 meeting. And that will be available on Zoom, and we hope that you'll be able to participate or send someone to represent you.
I've been the gatekeeper for about, I don't know, fifteen, twenty years. I would have thought if you had something to discuss with the gate, you might have asked me what my feelings were on it. But maybe it has nothing to do with what I do for the league.
Well, we're happy to know about your role, and we certainly can include you in discussions. We were going to start an executive session and then move to the public session. So we'll see what we can do to have you participate. Thank you.
You're welcome. And my other, my other thoughts, any comments on those? They should be a very big concern to the town.
Yes, we'll take those under advisement, and we will discuss each of the issues that you brought up. You brought up the issue about the gate repair, jet ski is coming very close to the beach, our meetings be very long. You would have liked to have been called on when we were discussing some of these issues. And you brought up the idea about sewers and the cost to individuals. And also wanting to give feedback as being a gatekeeper. Did I miss anything?
Yes, you missed that the individuals who are currently using the beach
Yes.
are not what I would consider the people that you might want on the beach in the middle of the day, drinking and whatever, when you'd really want families there and people using the swing sets and things like that. Now, maybe, maybe I don't understand what the public beach is. Maybe it's supposed to be used like that, and I just don't know it. And I would love it if you would say, yeah, everybody's allowed to go on there and do whatever they want. It would seem inappropriate.
Are you talking about the Briar Point Beach?
Yes, I am.
Okay, fine. I just wanted to clarify. All right, thank you. Thank you for participating and being so patient with us. Please bring in the next speaker, Mr. Beazey.
My name is Ted Beazey. Coventry is at 23 North Pat Road. Let me start by saying that I'm not here to complain about Socia Holdings. I know you're already aware that many of the people who you represent are outraged by Socia Holdings. Rather, I'm here because the problem is only partly what Socia is doing. The more fundamental part of the problem is that the related agreements and laws are written in a way that gives Socia the impression that he has the power to single-handedly do so much damage. We should not perpetuate laws that can be interpreted to mean that one person or corporation has the power to make decisions which have such wide-ranging impacts on wildlife, families, communities, and other taxpayers. In short, these are not the laws we need now to govern ownership and flow rights. At one time, apparently, it made sense for a company to be granted the legal rights to control water flow. It made sense for the legislature to grant Quidnick the power to control water flows to provide port no. That time has passed. It makes no sense now. It makes no sense now for the legislature to let stand a law that gives a person or company the impression that they have the right to damage our wetlands and wildlife, to arbitrarily determine when we can enjoy the parks and public access to the pond, to arbitrarily limit the enjoyment of the pond. Perhaps most importantly, the legislature should not let stand a law that gives a dam owner the power to reduce the taxable values of lake shore neighborhoods and shift the tax burden to all the other taxpayers in Coventry. So that legal structure has to change. We are talking to you and to Senator Raffekes about changing the laws. Before I close, I want to thank you for scheduling in-person meetings in September. I know how busy you are, but we need in-person meetings where more of us can raise our concerns and hear your views on the legislation needed to restructure updated property rights. Let me close with an offer to help. I'm just a concerned citizen. Concerned citizens on their own don't have the legal power to change laws and property rights, but you and our state legislators do. I speak for dozens of other families that I know of, and I know there are many more who would share our concerns if they knew the full impact of Socia Holdings' interpretation of their rights. My pledge to you is that we will bring attention to the issue. We would like to help you and our legislators find a responsible and sensible long-term fix. We will raise a groundswell of support, help you achieve a permanent solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your thoughtful words, Mr. Beazey, and also thank you very much. We are patient and, and waiting so long to speak this evening. We greatly appreciate it. We have a hand up, Mr. Wu.
Hi, how you doing? Yes, he kept on saying there's hundreds of calls. Bill Tweedy, he's the one that does hundreds of calls to my establishment every day. To the point that every time the police come, nothing found. I even warned him. I said, I'm going to call my lawyer and sue him for harassment because police come to my place, scare my customers, and nothing found every single time. That's, that's Bill Tweedy.
Okay, well, we don't, we don't want to talk about other people. We just want your, your opinion at this particular time, and you've given it. So thank you very much, Mr. Wu.
Thank you.
Any other hands up? Bill, did I, did I see your hand up again, Bill? Okay. All right, public comment. Bill, is your hand up again? Okay.
That was up.
Okay, I don't see any other, any other hands up. I'll take a motion to adjourn this meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn at, I hate to say this, 10:36.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please raise your hand if you'd like to adjourn. Foyers, no nays. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you for your patience. We have a very aggressive agenda. We didn't even finish it. I think the meeting on the July 13th, I think it's the 13th, the Monday, will, is getting longer, and we'll send you details as quickly as possible. So thank you very much. Good night, everybody.